It's just one, neither one's fine. One loads right into your PowerPoint. Yes. A big old box brought for you.
There was a fire, so there were engines everywhere.
Where is that at?
Um, just east of ITV.
ITV headquarters?
And just south of State Streets. So where that I Fund Credit Union is, just this side of it, I think. Hopefully, nobody got their eye there. No, it's kind of...
Working?
Yeah.
I was kind of looking for...
I'll meet you there. This is probably the first time. No!
Yes.
Yeah, the clerk is right there in the gray, gray sweater. J.C.?
Counsel, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
No move, second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Well...
Adjourn.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. And already an aye, to adjourn our special meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you for being here this evening. We'll just launch right into our city council meeting. Again, welcome. For the record, it is Tuesday, December 1st at 6:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Councilmember Zaramba.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here.
And Councilmember Borton is currently absent.
Thank you. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. Tonight will be led by Boy Scout Troop 62. We have Kyle Smith, Ryan Butler, Corbin McLaughlin, and Ewan Stubblefield Allen. If those young men could come forward and we'll wait for your instruction on when to stand up. Yes.
Will the audience please rise? Pitches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight, we do not have anyone here to lead us in that, so I'll move to item four, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
On the agenda this evening, under item 5K, the resolution number is 15-1100. On 5L, the resolution number is 15-1101. And on 5M, the resolution number is 15-1102. Item 7A has been requested by the applicant to continue till December 15th, 2015. And item 7G, the resolution number is 15-1103. On 7I, the resolution number is 15-1104. And item 8A, the ordinance number is 15-1665. And with those additions, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as noted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
We approve the consent agenda as amended, authorizing the clerk to attest and the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree. Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 6A, under other government, we do have Hillary here with us from the Meridian Arts Commission. Welcome, Hillary.
Thanks. Guess have a busy night. So I'm here to present the Meridian Arts Commission's proposed budget amendment. They are requesting $40,946. The Meridian Arts Commission has been allowed to track their end-of-year balances, which show that they have been good stewards of both city allotted and donated monies. The budget amendment in front of you is requesting spending authority for the purchase of Out on the Town by Daniel Borup, one of the proposals submitted for consideration at the Fairview in Maine Public Art Call to Artists. The second item that we are requesting funds for is additional funds for training the commissioners on MAC. And the final allocation that we are requesting is to support five traffic box wraps in FY '16. All of these expenses would take place in FY '16. The total amounts of each of those split out, Out on the Town, is $36,100. Training, MAC requests $1,000. And the five traffic boxes would be $3,846. And I'm here to stand for any questions you have regarding the budget amendment request.
Thank you, Hillary. Counsel, any questions for Hillary?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Hillary, did you mention where Out on the Town was going to go, since it's not going at Fairview in Maine?
Oh, sorry, no, I didn't mention that. We wanted to go on the City Hall Plaza, out near the sidewalk by the clock, between the clock and the lawn, but on the concrete out there. So it wouldn't have to tear up any of the existing grass or any of the existing brick that's out in the plaza. And that way, it's pretty accessible to both the street traffic, but also the people walking by coming into City Hall.
Perfect.
Madam Mayor.
Your Cavanagh.
Good question. I apologize for missing this. Why is it not going at Fairview in Maine any longer?
The Arts Commission recommended a different art piece for the Fairview and Maine intersection. This art piece received a lot of public, a lot of positive public comment, but one of the, or many of the public comments were related to the scale and the nature of the piece. They're life-sized children, and they actually look like pedestrians. And so, thinking about them being at an intersection where it's kind of busier traffic rather than slower traffic, and the scale of the site itself, MAC determined that a larger-scale piece might be better suited for that location. But because of all the favorable comments from the community, MAC was led by City Council to follow up with artists and see if they'd be willing, or see if he would be willing to negotiate a lower price, and that we could make it an additional installation.
It was also viewed to be something that people would want to touch, and this brings it closer to the appropriate location for that type of art. So thank you. Anything further from counsel? Mr. Borton.
Briefly describe the training. I don't think I understood that one.
So the training was requested as an addition, we already have budgeted, MAC has already budgeted a portion of their city allocated funds for training. They sent five commissioners to the NOWPEC Conference, which is a Northwest Regional Art Conference. But some of those commissioners that attended that conference actually thought that it would be beneficial now that they've got nine members to bring in one specialized trained, like, professional in the industry of public arts administration to talk to the Arts Commission about what that process is like. And they did this, I think it was two years ago, and it was about $900 to bring in someone.
Okay, anything further?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the budget amendment for various Meridian Arts Commission projects for not to exceed an amount of $40,946.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 6A. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
I would let our audience in the back that do not have a seat know that we do have an overflow in the conference rooms. As you came through the front doors, it's just to your immediate right or your left as you walk towards the doors. You can hear everything that's been said. We have then the videotape on the front. So if you signed in to testify, when your name's called, you can make it to this room. At least it gives you a place to sit down. So if you would like to do so, we do have that for your convenience and your comfort. So, just wanted to let you know. You don't have to stand. We are under seven action items. Item 7A has been requested to continue to December 15th. Now, counsel, that's certainly your purview. Staff, anything you want to comment on?
No, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we continue item H 2015-0004 to December 15th, 2015.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue item 7A to December 15th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 7B is a public hearing, continue from November 17th. It was not heard at that time. It was requested to be continued till this date. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applications before you are a request for a rezone, a preliminary plat, and a conditional use permit. This site consists of 5.4 acres of land, zoned R4, located at 2750 South Eagle Road at the southeast corner of South Eagle Road and East EasyJet Drive. A little history on this project, or this property. In 2002, a conditional use permit for a planned development was approved, which conceptually approved offices and high-density multifamily housing on this property as a land use exception in the R4 zoning district. Detailed approval of the planned development through a conditional use permit was required prior to development. There were no restrictions on the number of units, or footage of structures, building height, or number of stories that could be constructed. Of the 11 office multifamily lots that were approved for such uses, to the north of this property across EasyJet and also on the subject property, only the subject parcel remains for such uses. The other seven lots were approved through two separate conditional use permit modifications to develop with single-family homes and a self-service storage facility. The applicant has requested an application for a rezone of 6.55 acres of land from the R4 to the R15, which is 4.93 acres, and LO zoning, which is 1.62 acres, consistent with the mixed-use community future land use map designation and the uses approved with the planned development. This is a copy of the future land use map. The brown indicates the mixed-use community land use designation. A preliminary plat is requested for three multifamily building lots, two commercial office building lots, and one common lot on 5.41 acres of land. Two accesses are proposed via East EasyJet Drive, one to the office development and one to the multifamily development. Cross-access between the properties is also proposed. No access via South Eagle Road is proposed or approved. Staff recommends a cross-access easement is provided to the property to the south on the LO zone property, which is this area right here, for future interconnectivity and to reduce access points to Eagle Road. A minimum 25-foot-wide landscape buffer is required along Eagle Road, and a 10-foot-wide buffer is required along East EasyJet on the LO zone property. A 20-foot-wide buffer is required on the LO zone property to the residential property to the south. A solid vinyl fence with lattice top exists along the southern boundary of the LO portion of the site on the adjacent residential property. The Commission recommended matching fencing to be installed along the remainder of the southern boundary of the site. A solid vinyl fence exists along the east boundary of the site, and a chain-link fence exists along a portion of the north boundary that will be removed. The Commission recommended vinyl fencing be installed along the common areas adjacent to EasyJet to enhance safety for children. Sidewalks exist along the street frontages of this site. Staff recommends a pedestrian pathway stub is provided at the south boundary of the multifamily portion of the site for future interconnectivity between developments. This is a copy of the most recent site plan that was submitted. Again, the vehicle cross-access is proposed right here where my pointer is, and then the pedestrian connectivity should be provided somewhere in this area. A conditional use permit is requested for detailed approval of the office and multifamily development as required by the previously approved planned development that conceptually approved offices and multifamily development on this site, and as required by the UDC for multifamily developments in the R15 zoning district. Since the commission hearing, based on their recommendation, the applicant has submitted a revised site plan, as shown, that depicts three two-story structures rather than the one-two-story and two-three-story structures originally proposed. The office portion consists of two buildings, 5,600 square feet in area that front on Eagle Road. The number of dwelling units in the multifamily portion was reduced from 64 to 48, with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. A 1,620-square-foot clubhouse with a fitness facility, a children's play structure, and a large open grassy area are proposed as amenities. Approximately half an acre of qualified outdoor common open space and 80 square foot of private usable open space is proposed for each unit, consistent with UDC standards. With the revised plan, the number of parking spaces were reduced and open space was increased. Off-street parking is proposed in excess of UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the multifamily structures and clubhouses, but not for the garages, carports, or office buildings. Construction materials for the multifamily structures consist of horizontal hardy plank lap siding and vertical hardy board, board and batten siding with rough-sawn stained wood detailing in a combination of three different colors on each building. Materials for the clubhouse consist of the same types of siding with the addition of stone accents on the columns. Staff recommends stone masonry accents are applied to 50% of the available wall length at a minimum height of 24 inches are added to the facades of the multifamily structures and clubhouse visible from the street to match the front elevation of the clubhouse and complement adjacent residences. Summary of the commission public hearing, Lisa Bachman testified in favor. There were several people that testified in opposition. Those are listed in the public record and in the recommendation document. Again, for the written testimony, same thing. It is, all the written testimony is included in the public record. The key issue of discussion by the commission was the appropriate density and building height for this site. Commission changes to the staff report. At the request of staff, the commission added a condition that vinyl fencing be installed adjacent to the common areas abutting EasyJet to enhance safety for the children playing in the open lawn and playground areas. To include a condition that limits the building height of the apartment structures on the site to two stories, and the inclusion of a condition requiring fencing to be installed along the southern boundary of the site to match the existing fencing. There are no outstanding issues for counsel. Again, written testimony has been received since the commission hearing, and it is all part of the public record that you've been copied on. The commission recommended approval of the proposed applications per the staff report with the changes previously noted. Staff is requesting a modification to condition number 1.1.10E. And it is noted there on your outline as follows. The multifamily stairwells shall be integrated with the building design and provide residents protection from the weather. Internal circulation and stairwells to access individual units are encouraged. This is straight out of the design manual. Staff will stand for any questions the mayor and counsel may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff at this time? Counsel, I did want you to know, I have talked to several of the neighbors as I knocked on doors in October. So we talked about process. I also had a couple neighbors come to a town hall that I hosted, so just wanted to put that on the record. Okay, I will ask if the applicant's here and would like to come and make comments.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. For the record, Lisa Bachman with AUB Engineers, addresses 250 South Beechwood Avenue, Suite 201, Boise, Idaho, 83709.
Thank you.
Get the PowerPoint.
Don't we love it when it makes that sound? The beeping. Am I able to change the slides?
Select a color at the top, and then you can advance it or write on it. I also have Kristi Watkins here. She's a planner that's worked on this project and was also involved in the neighborhood meeting. Scott Wonders was the project engineer. He's actually not here tonight, but hopefully we can answer any questions that you might have. So some topics tonight that I'd like to discuss. I'm going to go ahead and go over the conditions of approval. I think staff did a really good job in outlining that, so I don't want to reiterate too much, but I will go over those. Also, I'd like to make two additional points about the project, and then stand for any questions. As staff had indicated, the planning and zoning recommendation was for approval with some conditions. Regarding the stairwells, we had requested that they could be, did not have to be internal to the buildings as long as we put in some decorative treatments around there, and they seemed okay with that. And staff modified that condition of approval, so we're good with that. They also requested that we, or recommended that we reduce the buildings to two-story maximum, and were amenable to that. We have submitted a site plan with that change. And also, the installation of the vinyl fencing and the locations that staff had indicated, and they're both outlined here in the PowerPoint. So the two points that I'd like to make tonight is that this project is a high-quality development. It fits within the neighborhood aesthetically, from a building form standpoint, a color standpoint. We have improved the project based on both neighborhood concerns, staff's concerns, and also Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations. So a little bit about the high-quality development. As staff has indicated, and as you've seen in your staff reports, it's a mixed-use project. It implements the city's comprehensive plan, complies with city code. It fits into the Eagle Overland area where you see a lot of commercial development and mixed-use housing, offices, those types of things. Provides nice living space for empty nesters, retired folks, and people looking for convenient living options. We've provided ample open space and amenities within the project. It exceeds the minimum required open space, nearly double of what is required for the density that we're proposing. As your staff report shows and staff has outlined, we're providing open grassy areas, courtyard for shared use, a transitioning area between the commercial and the residential area courtyard to kind of bring that together, and then a common-play area with a clubhouse and also a fitness center. And again, ample parking that exceeds the minimum requirements. This slide just shows the elevations, which you've already seen. This is from the three-story, which actually it'll be two-story, so I wanted to make that note on this. But we will be providing stone accents with earth-toned colors, matching surrounding styles, landscaping around the foundations to fit within the neighborhood and throughout the development. Going into the improved project based on neighborhood and PNZ input, we had two neighborhood meetings for this project dating back this summer. The initial proposal when we first started out with this project was for 76 units. We didn't ever submit that to the city, but that's conceptually what the project started out as in calculating the density based on the overall project. Since it is a mixed-use, we were thinking we could get that many units out of it. But after the first neighborhood meeting and talking with staff and looking at it very closely, we went ahead and reduced that down to 64 units. And that's what we went ahead and proposed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And it did include three-story buildings as well as two-story buildings with the two-story buildings adjacent to the Sutherland Farms subdivision. But tonight, as staff has indicated since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and what we're proposing tonight is for approval of 48 units, which brings us down to 11.29 dwelling units per acre, and then we would still maintain the two commercial lots. We've brought this density down quite a bit from the original proposal. The development now includes two, it's all two-story multifamily buildings, so there'd be three total, and also the additional fencing. Just a few points here to point out. I think staff briefly went over it, but to go in a little more detail, the required open space is about 16,000 square feet. We're actually providing 39,000 square feet with the new site plan. The required parking is 90 spaces with 48 covered. The required parking is 90 spaces with 48 covered. And we are providing 115 with 70 covered spaces. Required bicycle parking, and this is just for the multifamily area, is eight spaces and we're providing 20. For the commercial, two one-story commercial buildings, they're about 5,600 square feet apiece. Again, the required parking is 25 spaces. We're providing 56 with bicycle parking required at four and we're providing 10.
Well, that was quick and easy now, wasn't it? So, with that, I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
Lisa, the staff report indicated that their recommendation is to provide masonry to the front of the dwellings and are you amenable to that?
Yes.
Can you hear in the back? Okay, so counsel, if you would please pull your, your microphones and eat them. Any, any questions at this point?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor and Council.
We had a number of you sign up to, to indicate your support or opposition. When I read your name, if you would like to provide testimony at that time, I would invite you forward. If you would not like to, I will indicate how you indicated on the, the paper. And so, just to say, I probably will mutilate some of your names, so I apologize in advance. Fred Thompson signed up against. I'm glad we started with a name I could say. Thank you for being here. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Dr. Fred Thompson. My wife Sandy and I have lived at 2853 South Nefright in Meridian, 83642 for the past 10 years.
Thank you.
Having purchased our home in the area because it fit our lifestyle. The proposed development lays just three houses to our north. And I want to make three points. I believe, in my opinion, that the project as proposed is incompatible with the present character of the surrounding neighborhoods, which are single-family maximum two-story residences. The second one is despite the assertion in, in the planning and zoning meetings that ACHD has, has approved the, the traffic flow, I think that they, they must have been looking at a different property because when the new signal lighted Eagle and, and EZ Jet was installed in conjunction with the, the widening of Eagle, we had a highly increased amount of traffic being diverted through our, through the Sutherland Farms subdivision, causing there to be a necessity for a, some temporary speed bumps on both my street on Nefright as well as Bay Star. And that, people are, have a tendency, if they run into a roadblock, to go around that roadblock. And in this case, going around the roadblock includes passing through Sutherland Farm. Either they're going through Sutherland Farm, taking Nap Avenue over to the Silverwood complex, or moving on, straight on through to Muir, to the Muir Woods subdivision, or turning south on Bay Star and ending up, ending up on Victory. The traffic generated by the addition of this proposed multifamily housing will exacerbate the existing traffic conditions. Right now, traffic often backs up at the corner of EZ Jet and Eagle during, during going to work and coming home times. The third point that I want to make is there exists the possibility, given the structure of the property, that future owners of the proposed development could, in times of economic downturn, choose to request a change of status to allow conversion of their property to HUD housing with the attendant loss of nearby property values. Counsel, you have it in your power to deny this, this request as you will, if you will, and we ask that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Albert Casta, Castanola. There you go. Thank you for being here. If on the record, you'll state your name and address.
Albert Castagnola. 2611 South Tristram.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe that this is a travesty because we're talking about increasing the density of this R4 zoning. And the increased density is to the profit of the property owner who has a right to a profit. And a decrease of the value of hundreds of homes. And of course, decisions made here should be made the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And we can't have this development under those conditions. This, this decision should have been made prior to the last election. And it was postponed and postponed until we're here now after the election. I believe that I would have had greater faith in the outcome had it been held, had the decision been made prior to the election. And, and not to impugn anyone here, I'm sorry if you think I am doing that. There's going to be, people from this new development as proposed would be trying to use the park, which is a private park in the subdivision. And Meridian Police Department will be getting many phone calls to that area for something that should never occur. It's, it's a problem that could be avoided just by denying the request to change from R4. The R4 development does allow a profit for the developer. And it was acceptable to the developer, to the owners of that property at the time that the zoning was made originally. So, I see no reason why it should be changed now. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ed Williams signed up against. Okay, thank you, Ed. Nadia Pippens? Thank you. Signed up against. Elizabeth Kreiner? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name's Elizabeth Kreiner and I own a home at 4173 East Rajah Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83642, in the Sutherland Farms neighborhood. I'm here to speak against the proposal as it currently exists. I still think that there are some additional changes that could occur to address concerns of residents who own property around the parcel. One of the things, and I actually had a bunch of notes that I put together and I think I'm going to speak a little bit more extemporaneously because I think one of the challenges with all of this is I built a home in the neighborhood. I bought the property. I looked into the neighborhood's CCNRs, the HOA. I did my due diligence. I looked online to see what I could find about what would happen with that empty property because it sits at the front of our neighborhood. And the only thing that I could find, and I am not a development expert, but what I found was R4, what my real estate agent was able to determine was, well, the game plan is they're going to do more small business, commercial development out there probably, or maybe more patio homes. And it, I, I think even when you try to do your due diligence, the fact that all of these changes can occur once your investment is made and your home is built down the road that will impact your decision, your lifestyle, your investment. And for most of us, this, the house that we own in this neighborhood is the single largest investment that we have. And I think that's why you see the kind of concern that you do. This parcel is an integrated part. It's at the entrance of our neighborhood. It's not across the street. It's not down at the corner. It is literally the entrance to our neighborhood. And as such, you know, I personally think that if anything moves forward, it needs to be integrated with the requirements that we all had to fulfill for building our homes with respect to the types of colors and siding and stones, et cetera. Also, I'm very concerned that if you all decide to approve this change to R15, that suddenly, six months from now, the developer decides, well, we're going to make some more changes and if there aren't enough appropriate conditional requirements for it, that we will again be seeing three-story buildings, that we will again be seeing additional buildings potentially on the property and reduction of any sort of transitional barriers between the single-family homes, the agricultural parcel, et cetera. And so, I would just ask that as you go through this, that you keep those things in mind and ensure that whatever is approved, because we've got a better situation than we started with, but that we don't see six months from now, suddenly additional buildings, higher buildings, and other changes that again, take us further down the road of degrading what I felt was a great neighborhood when I bought my property and hopes it stays that way. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Charles Carlson signed up against.
I am Chuck Carlson and I live at 2706 South Teddy Avenue in Sutherland Farms.
Thank you, Charles. If you'll pull the microphone a little closer so your neighbors can also hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
I would like to touch briefly on two subjects, livability and expectation. Livability, Idaho is a great place to live. Livability is what convinces companies to bring their business and employees to Idaho. There's a common city government view that residential costs our local city money and commercial makes our city government money. City governments chasing high-density projects for tax revenue in homeowner communities not only decreases the livability of the communities, but also decreases property values. If you approve this proposed project, you'll be killing the golden goose that lays the golden eggs. Expectation. The homeowners in Sutherland Farms, Sutherland Downs, Muir Woods, Thousand Springs, had the reasonable expectation when they purchased their homes that the surrounding areas would be developed in a manner that would enhance the livability and property value of their investment. And the homeowners of the properties between EZ Jet and Victory on Eagle have the reasonable expectation to enjoy their properties without the encroachment of high-density multifamily and commercial projects. Did you know that there are already several individual homeowners along that stretch of land? And the owner of the proposed EZ Jet project has a reasonable expectation to develop his property. He knew it was zoned R4 when he purchased the property, just like the homeowners in the surrounding neighborhoods knew the zoning of their property when they purchased, just like the previous speaker said. And the owners of the surrounding properties have the reasonable expectation that other property owners will not develop nor maintain their property in a manner that decreases their livability or property value. It is reasonable for surrounding homeowners to expect the Meridian City Council to conduct themselves in a manner that is best for the community, not just one developer. Zoning codes were written several years ago. During that time, the city of Meridian and the local communities have grown. It is far past time for the zoning to be reviewed and updated to reflect the wants and needs of the current citizens and communities. You, the city council, now have the opportunity to make this right. Please, no apartments on EZ Jet and keep the proposed EZ Jet project zoning at R4. Thank you.
Thank you. Emile and Linda Perry signed up against. Thank you. Joanne and Charles? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Joanne St. Charles, 3482 East Yesternight Street.
I'm sorry, I thought it was Joanne and Charles.
That's okay.
I apologize.
That's quite all right. Yesternight Street, Meridian, and I'm speaking for myself, my husband, and my neighbors Kathy and Vince Lucari. And I have some illustrations. I'm not sure how to use this, how to use this machine, but the Sutherland Farm Plan Department was conceptually approved with offices and multifamily housing in balance with the land use exception in the R4 zoning district. And that was under a different code at the time. But at that time, the developer was specific about where the multifamily housing was proposed, saying specifically in the eastern end of the office area adjacent to the townhomes, which would be in here. Okay, that was consistent with the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan because it did allow for a buffer, these townhomes were a buffer between the residential area and what would be these multifamily homes. And then down here where we're proposing to build the apartments now was another buffer to the single-family residential and that was going to be light office commercial. Okay, in 2004, the developer, and there's a second illustration. Oh. So, in 2004, the developer amended the plan seeking to achieve density goals by adding 47 more R8 density lots. So, he more than doubled the R8 density at that time and he got a special variance to reduce the minimum land area frontage required in R8 zone. And at that time, the developer's application said, and I quote, "No other variances or waivers are required or requested." And so, if they had a special deal under City Code 1263 from 2002, it seems to me they already exercised that. Okay, this design also met the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan because it still included a buffer for the single-family homes. And these served as a transitional area between the commercial and the single-family. So, now, though the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations to limit the apartments to two stories is, is helpful, we still feel that an apartment complex in this location conflicts with the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan in these ways. Mixed-use areas are typically developed under a master conceptual plan during an annexation or rezone request, which was the case here as well. But the area now proposed to have apartments had been planned as an office area, which would have provided a transitional buffer to those single-family homes. The location that had been accepted for the proposed multifamily has already been used at this point. The city of Meridian Plan states, "Within residential areas, the following policies shall apply. In residential areas, the density can only be changed one step." And we've gone from R4 directly to R15 without a transitional buffer in between. The city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan has a number of figures that demonstrate the substantial buffers between R4 and other uses. If you scroll down, I believe, there's an example. This is just one of the examples to see how they use the local collector road as a buffer. And to quote the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan, "Allies and roadways shall be used as transition from dissimilar land uses and between residential densities and housing types." The city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan states that the purpose of mixed-use community designations is to allow areas where community-serving uses and dwellings seamlessly are integrated into the urban fabric. Building a complex immediately next to single-family residences without a transitional buffer doesn't serve the community or integrates seamlessly. There is little in the way of any commercial services in this area, this immediate area without accessing Eagle or Victory or Overland. There are no grocery stores for miles. There's no transit service. So, putting a high-density R15 development in this location where the only access to the arterial is by making a left onto EZ Jet. where the only access to the arterial is by making a left to EasyJet at a point where the traffic's already queued up to Eagle Road is gonna force those residents to make a right and travel through the existing residential streets, which weren't designed to handle arterial traffic and don't provide visibility and safety needed to handle that traffic. So finally, the last, if you go scroll up one, please back up one. So the last point I wanted to make is that this decision's gonna set a precedent. And there are 14 homes that stretch along that unplatted land. And so if we, if we put apartment buildings here, I'm concerned that they're gonna continue to stretch along the backs, the backyards of those 14 homes. We knew the remaining land was R-4. We knew that it had been part of the initial overall development to be planned to use as light office. And we knew that the city of Meridian had a requirement for a transitional buffer to protect our quality of life. So we ask that you please not make an exception to the Meridian's published design to the detriment of an established community and the communities surrounding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, selling? Signed up against. Now you know why I prefaced my, my introduction with, "I apologize in advance."
No apologies needed.
So thank you for being here. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Al Chelly. I live at 2799 South Nefrite in Meridian. And it is the neighbor to this new development. I have a lot of concerns. I agree with everything that everybody's said tonight so far. But my concerns are the noise, lighting, and possible parking problems that will occur on Nefrite. From what I've seen of the schematics, I have not seen what the wall will be like separating my property from the complex. If I had a say in it, I would like to see an eight-foot masonry wall, which would be a good sound barrier between my property and theirs. Two, the, the lighting. Bedrooms in my home are in the rear. And if I'm gonna be disturbed all night or have to buy blackout shades in order to keep the light out, I don't believe that's fair to me as a homeowner. You know, my wife and I, we looked around. I checked to see what the zoning was for that property before I bought this home 10 years ago. And it was R-4. And as far as I'm concerned, it should maintain that at this point. I believe I'm the most affected person on this property so far. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you for being here. Joan Rocha? Signed up against. Thank you for being here.
So my name is Joan Rocha.
Rocha.
And I reside at 3788 East Gerdner Drive, Meridian, Idaho. And I have these concerns. The original Sutherland Farm Plan development was approved and intended to provide 19.4 acres of offices. This met certain goals that were stated and included within the development agreement dated November 4, 2002, such as Goal 3, to encourage the kind of economic growth and development which supplies employment and economic self-sufficiency for existing and future residences, reduces the reliance on Boise, and strengthen the city's open space character. Goal 9, to encourage a balance of land use patterns to ensure that revenues pay for services. City staff found that the 2002 Plan Development will bring additional employment opportunities. The approved Plan Development provided 97 acres of residential development and 19.4 acres of potential office development, which is 15.5% of the overhaul, overall project. In 2004, 6.8 acres were removed from the office portion of the project and included in the residential portion of the project with rezon 04-006. In 2014, an additional 4.8 acres of the potential office development were excluded from the Sutherland Farm Plan Development for the Citadel Storage Facility. This leaves only five acres of potential office development within the Sutherland Farm Plan Development. But only 1.5 acres is devoted to the constructions of off, construction of offices within the EasyJet subdivision. To date, there has not been one office constructed as part of the approved Sutherland Farm Plan Development. With the potential approval of the EasyJet conditional use permit, the promised 19.4 acres of offices is reduced to 1.5 acres of offices. The original ratio of 15.5% of offices is now less than 1% of potential, potential offices to provide economic self-sufficiency for existing and future residences. Should the city council approve building apartments in lieu of office buildings on the entirety of this property, the stated Goals 3 and 9 in the approved 2002 Plan Development will no longer be met. Approving the EasyJet subdivision conditional use permit will create a violation of the existing approved and recorded development agreement for the Sutherland Farm Plan Development. Does approving the EasyJet project make the existing development agreement invalid? It is the job of the city council and city attorney to enforce existing legal agreements that have been approved and entered, they have approved and entered into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joan. Now, we printed on this, but I'm not sure what this printing is. So maybe it's Eugene. It begins with an E. So Eugene? Ho-Hatch?
Ho-Halter.
Ho-Halter. Signed up against. Thank you, Eugene. Deborah? His wife. Thank you. Signed up against as well. Karen Spalding? Signed up against. Thank you. Patricia? I'm sorry, what was the last name? Oh, Gueye. Thank you for being here. Signed up against. Pam Judy? Signed up against. Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pamela Judy and I reside at 4046 East Raja Drive in Sutherland Farm Southern Division.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Under Section 1175(c) for Planned Unit Developments, it states that "The arrangement of uses and/or structures in the development does not cause damage, hazard, or nuisance to persons or property in the vicinity." We find that it will cause damage to the adjacent property owners. They will lose their privacy due to the close proximity of the apartment buildings to their property. These buildings will have balconies that will look into their homes and their backyards. This project is only requiring a 15-foot setback to the south property line. That is the exact distance from where I'm standing to where you're sitting. So can you imagine what it would be like if you're the homeowner in your backyard and these buildings are right there, right there? Imagine going shopping for a home with your life savings or 30-year investment. Will you personally choose a home directly adjacent to this apartment project? Keep in mind that you will no longer be able to see sunsets from your home if these are built. But you will see a large-scale building and people on their balconies. If you were to buy this home, would you expect to buy it at a lower rate because of the buildings that are in your backyard? Or would you choose to buy somewhere else where this community is not within sight of this apartment complex? You can see this project, if approved, would have an impact on both the privacy, quality of life, and value of investments for the property owners adjacent to this property, especially the home that is directly next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think this is Guy. It could be Gene. Ha or Hoz? Might be in the other room. Signed up against. It could be. If you're close to a G and an H, come on. Thank you for being here. If you'll state your name for the record.
My name is George Howard.
George, thank you.
And I live 4012 East Raja.
Thank you.
Officially, I go on record against the project. But I realize that it's a, it's a piece of property that needs to be developed. It's a, it's a field right now. It's a, looks pretty sad. And it is gonna be developed in the future at some particular point. And I would like to thank JUB for kind of reducing the size of the whole project. That does help out. My basic concern is, is if the project is granted to go forward, that you hold them to 48 units. And in their drawings, they state the maximum height is 29 feet 4 inches, so under 30 feet, which is pretty compatible with the rest of the homes that are two stories or a single story with a bonus room. And I'd like to kind of hold their feet to the fire. They're requesting an R-15. And the density, as, as they've stated, is an R-9, which is good. I mean, it's, I don't think you're gonna expect much more in there. If you had R-8, it's for like in Sutherland Downs, that's what it would be. So I'd almost say, why not drop it to R-8? And then make an exception or for the extra person or two that's in the, that's in the, goes over. It's only going to an R-9. So there's something to think about anyhow. It's been mentioned a number of times about the R-4 designation. We moved from an area that had almost the same problem. We had an apartment complex built at the end of our road in a subdivision, only two ways out, and we're on one of the roads, okay? For the first four or five years, okay, pretty good. More traffic, but doable. It's okay. It got worse and worse and worse. And pretty soon, the police were there about, well, I'd say once a week, once every other week. Got to the point where I could spot detective cars. And the fire station was there about once a month. And then the trash wouldn't be picked up. And then vehicles started to be abandoned or left out. And it kind of went downhill from there. And the trash ended up being on the streets, fast-food wrappers primarily. And it got to be a real problem. So we're real sensitive to this. We did some research when we bought our house because we were on this issue. So we went to the, where both people go, I think, is to the tax assessor's website because you can see what the zoning is. Oh, it's R-4. We looked at Silverstone Plaza and the rest of the surrounding area. It looked pretty good, or at least reasonable. And I might suggest as a, to help things out, I don't know how to, how to manipulate this. But on that website, if you have a zoning, it's not you, it's Ada County, that it has R-4 maybe with an asterisk or a flume or some, some designation by this rating that tells you that, hey, what does this mean? So you can carry it a little bit further to find out, well, that could be R-15. And that could be an apartment complex. That could be a, a commercial business. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary? Signed up against. Thank you. Gary Lee signed up against. Thank you. Pat Miniger signed up against. Yes, thank you. Marlene? Signed up against. Miniger? Okay, thank you. Yes, we know that. John and Renee Rebecca Tucker signed up against. Thank you. Thank you. With a K. Signed up against. Would you like to come forward, please? I'm sorry, Fred. I couldn't read your handwriting. If you'll just come on forward. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, my name is Fred Caparis and I live in 3415 East Quinn Drive in Sutherland Downs.
Thank you.
And I was looking at this last revised site plan here. And since we've started this whole process, it's changed two or three times already. And I was kind of surprised to see it again today. Instead of like 64 apartment buildings, we have 48 listed on this plan here. And now there's two, looks like there's two common areas here along EasyJet Road that there doesn't appear to be a building other than maybe a clubhouse. And I, when I'm looking at this, it seems to me, and I think the lady brought it up once before, that we, the initial plan, we're gonna see three apartment buildings going in here. And then all of a sudden, along EasyJet, you know, when things get going, there's gonna be changes made. I mean, and to me, this is nothing but a, you know, a camouflage plan of what we're actually gonna be seeing here further down the road. You know, the developer, you know, he knows how to play these games, I'm sure. And so you can see that all of a sudden, you know, we're pacified now because we see two of these empty, big common areas here. But there's nothing in those common areas that says that's the way they're gonna stay. And so how do we know that if this site plan is approved by the council, that this is the way it's gonna end up? I mean, how do we know that? Is there, Councilman Berg, do we know that that's the way it's gonna end up? No. The answer is no.
Yes, we do.
You do? How do you know that these two common areas are gonna be common areas?
We'll have our attorney address that. And, and so he can explain when an approval is made. That's, that's their entitlement.
Well, I, you know, I, my wife and I have been, lived in different places. And we have seen that what was approved and what happens further down the road, it is not how, how this whole thing works. You know, pretty soon, that there's changes made. And all of a sudden, you'll see another two or three-story building popping up right there. And then it's just the way it's worked in the past. And so I, I, we just wanna be sure that this is the way it's gonna end up, if you approve it, that that's, this is, there'll be common areas here and not all of a sudden be another two or three-story building popping up right there in that empty spot. So, you know, we also have, my wife and I have concerns about the traffic. There is significant traffic. It's already been brought up that the traffic. And i- if you see right here, you know, all of a sudden, we only have like, the parking spots went, went up per unit. And, and I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, why is there so many parking spots over there? And because initially, there was just one and a half per household. And I, I think there isn't anybody in here, and I'm sure you all, that there's not one and a half cars in your household. You know, there's more than one and a half. Sometimes if you have children, there's one for each child. You know, you'll have four or five for each place.
Fred, can you summarize your testimony, please?
Okay, my test, I'm just concerned that this is not the way it's gonna end up. And, you know, I wanna be sure that if, if you approve this plan, that there will not be two more apartment buildings going in there along EasyJet in that common area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Robert Nielsen signed up against. Good evening. Bob, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Robert Nielsen. I live at 3508 East Quinn Drive in Meridian. And as you mentioned, I am opposed to the EasyJet subdivision as proposed. A two-step increase to medium-high-density residential zoning, R-15, with multifamily housing as proposed, are not compatible with this small infill development, which is directly about medium-low-density R-4 single-family homes. With this small property, it's not possible to have transitional density with the adjacent residential neighborhood. And the site plan does not have an adequate landscaping buffer. More desirable would be to do something with the entire property where it might have professional offices or services or to rezon the property so or to rezone the property, so that it could look at something like R eight residential properties, say patio homes, townhomes, or condos. These options would provide jobs and/or services to the local area, consistent with the original plan for Sutherland Farms Development, or medium-density housing more consistent with the existing residential area. The developer is finally listening to the residents' concerns and the unanimous recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to eliminate the three-story multifamily buildings and to lower the number of dwelling units to forty-eight. This is great. It reduces the scale, the building mass, and the dwelling unit density, but it doesn't completely eliminate neighborhood concerns as you're hearing, although it is a step in the right direction. I would like to see something different. But what I would like to also ask is that if the plan is, as presented tonight, is accepted, that you should also require that the residential buildings on the east end of the property conform with the design appearance and exterior materials in the existing neighborhood. For example, you heard that we're talking about two-foot-high stone on fifty percent of the front area. I believe in the housing developments, the requirement is four feet high. I ask that you also require substantially more than the number of parking spaces City Code requires. Since with non-traditional occupants, where two bedrooms, where bedrooms, excuse me, are often subleased to save money, two-bedroom apartments can easily have four vehicles associated with it. And despite the statement that Lisa Bachmann made in the beginning, where the number of parking spaces are almost doubled, the actual increase in parking spaces from one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and seventy-one for both the commercial and residential properties is an increase of forty-eight percent, where the increase was doubled in the commercial side, but not in the residential side. Still, this is a substantial increase in the number of parking spaces, but it's also consistent with what we've been hearing from the developer in neighborhood meetings and the planning and zoning meetings, where we hear things that are partially correct, but not a complete reflection of the truth. Finally, I would ask that you require a staffed onsite maintenance office for an apartment complex. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ken Maury, signed up against? Okay. Joy Maury, signed up against as well? Cheryl Freeman, Freeman? Freeman. Signed up against?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Freeman. I live at thirty-five eleven East Shugar Court. I'm right on the corner of Bay Star and Victory Road. We have so much concern about the traffic on Victory Road. It's backed up. We can't get in our subdivision, either section of our subdivisions, and it's just hard to get in there, so. And with the traffic, and with all the kids coming in, I have problems with the kids too, so. But they will be coming my way from Easy Jet and coming through our subdivision, so it's just going to make it really bad for our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul and Kathy Hosford, signed up against?
Good evening. My name is Paul Hosford. I live at twenty-seven eleven South Knapp, adjacent to Easy Jet in the Sutherland Farms subdivision. I'd like to talk about the precedent this is setting for South Eagle Road, south of the Silverstone Plaza. This will be the first high-density that I can imagine on South Eagle Road. What kind of precedent is that going to be for the rest of the lots here? You are opening up a traffic bottleneck, yet another bottleneck in Meridian. And you have, we can stop this here. The solution for this density, the places is right down the street. It's Overland, it's Franklin, you widen Franklin, you have these lots. On Overland, there's court fields that are for sale right now, that have the services, that have the, that have businesses that want the traffic. Not South Eagle. This is just going to be a bottleneck. You know you're going to put this development in there, you're going to see forty-eight units, and you're going to keep adding forty-eight, forty-eight, forty-eight. It'll continue on down. This is the time to stop it. This is the place. Be bold. Make the call here. Thank you.
Thank you. John and Nancy Boudreaux? Boudreaux? Yes, against. I figured you'd come forward and share that. Thank you for being here. If you'll please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is John Boudreaux. I live at twenty-seven twenty-seven South Halo Place.
Thank you.
And one of the things, listening to all of this, is I heard the word "several people objected to that." Well, you know, I deal with words a lot in my prior careers, and several means two, three, four, five, not hundreds that have been against this right from the start. So when you start using words like "several," that diminishes us and the whole community. Why don't you put the number of people that actually are against it versus the number that are for? Then we have an idea of the numbers, the several versus the one, or the many, or what. That's my first point. The other point is, when we bought, not too long ago, let's see, six, seven months ago, we bought because it was zoned R four. If we would have known then that it was zoned for something else, but the record said R four, which meant to me that there would only be four homes per acre, and now it's fifteen, it was more? Well, where's the buffer zones go? Which was required to have buffer zones. Those went out the window. Even your planned development plan said R four. And now you're going to change it to R eight, R fifteen, R three hundred? We don't know. You keep changing everything when it's convenient. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Anderson, signed up against? Thank you. Bruce Wog? Yes, signed up against, as did Linda. Thank you. Casey Butterfield, signed up against? Okay. Eric Gabrielson, signed up against?
My name is Eric Gabrielson. I reside at forty-two thirty-one East Easy Jet Drive, Meridian and Sutherland Farms. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor and the staff for allowing myself and others to speak on the Easy Jet apartment. I'd also like to thank everyone for their service to the city of Meridian and to our community. My wife and I live near the corner of Easy Jet Drive and Tristram Way. Easy Jet is a main street through Sutherland Farms, and we are less than a block away from Hollendale, which connects our subdivision with Muir Ridge Drive. Our immediate concern with building of the proposed apartments is the increase in traffic that will be generated by this complex. It is not unreasonable to estimate that there will be at least two cars per apartment unit. With the latest platting of forty-eight units, that would equal ninety-six cars. It is also not unreasonable to assume that will be at least one trip through our subdivision each day. That alone will be a huge increase in the traffic to our subdivision and in Muir Woods as well. If apartment residents are going to the grocery store, or just heading towards Boise and Overland, they will come down Easy Jet, turn on Hollendale, and then down Muir Ridge to Cloverdale. People don't like to wait long at the light at Overland and Eagle Road. So unless they are going to the freeway, or heading north on Eagle, or heading west on Overland, they tend to choose an alternate route, which takes them through our subdivision. The fact that two accesses to the development are via Easy Jet Drive also raises concerns for peak hour traffic. With our current traffic, the intersection at Easy Jet and Eagle is often congested as people wait to make the turn onto Eagle. Apartment residents who have difficulty going west on Easy Jet will choose to head east through our subdivision to access either Victory to the south, or Cloverdale to the east. They may utilize the entrance to the Business Park on Pine Bluff to the north. There is tremendous amount of building currently underway on both sides of Eagle between Victory and Amity. The traffic on Eagle will continue to increase. As this occurs, the congestion at Easy Jet and Eagle will increase at peak traffic hours. We are very concerned that the big increase in the traffic from the apartment complex could adversely affect our property value and affect our quality of life. We also have many children in our neighborhood who ride their bikes and scooters to the Pepper Ridge Elementary School. It is very likely that these children will encounter increased traffic as they come down Easy Jet, turn on Hollendale, and over through Muir Ridge. I was very surprised to see that there's no concerns from the Meridian Police Department. There is no doubt in any of our minds that there will be a traffic problem rising from this dense of a development. I think the impact has been underestimated. I am completely against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Gabrielson, signed up against?
Good evening. My name is Carol Gabrielson. I live at forty-two thirty-one East Easy Jet Drive, and I am speaking against the proposed apartment complex. My husband and I have serious concerns over the long-term impact this apartment complex will have on our neighborhood. Within a three-mile radius of Sutherland Farm, there are eight hundred and fifty-four apartment units. These units range from high-end apartments with many amenities to low-end units with few amenities. The Easy Jet apartments are towards the lower end of these units. Those of us who have lived in this valley all of our lives have seen times when vacancy rates for rental units have dropped to very low levels. This lasts for a period of time, and then the vacancy rates climb again. At the rate that we are building rental units in Meridian, the vacancy rates may start to climb sooner than we think. High-end complexes in our area, such as Gramercy Villas, the Fields of Gramercy, and Redtail Luxury Apartments, will weather the increases in vacancy rates better than lower-end complexes such as the Easy Jet apartments. Renters will choose to spend their dollars at complexes with many luxury amenities. When apartment buildings are no longer profitable, there are very few available options. The owner can either lower the rates to appeal to lower-income renters, or let the buildings deteriorate and use it as a tax write-off. Neither of these options have a desirable income, outcome for our subdivision. We are fully aware that if this apartment complex is approved, the Meridian Comprehensive Plan will allow developers to put the remaining acreage from Easy Jet to Victory into more apartments. The staff report asks for stub openings to be added at the south end of the parking lot for the commercial buildings, and also at the south end of, at the roundabout entrance for the apartment complex. This is a clear indication that future complexes may be built. Those of us who commute daily out of Easy Jet onto Eagle know that traffic will be pushed into our subdivision because of the gridlock. The property value of the homes on the main exit routes will be impacted. The lot upon which the Easy Jet apartments will be built is a long, narrow lot with several homes on Neffright in close proximity. There is no question that the property value of these homes will be affected. When parts of the subdivision are adversely affected, it spreads through the rest of the subdivision. My husband and I have already experienced this in our previous Meridian subdivision where we lived for thirty years. We not only lost property value, but we lost our quality of life. When you lose the ability to feel safe and secure in your own home, you never want to experience it again. The city of Meridian has an obligation to protect its homeowners. We pay property taxes, we volunteer, we attend churches, our children and grandchildren attend Meridian schools, and many of us work or have worked in Meridian. We have invested in this community, and we deserve to be protected from those who simply want to make a quick profit. Our HOA expressed concerns about the fact that each apartment building is built on a separate lot and can, and can be multiple owners, and there can be multiple owners of the complex. Lisa Bachmann from J U B acknowledged that this practice is common, so it seems that this is likely to occur. We have some big concerns over how this is going to be managed. We'd like to have some say, if this apartment complex is approved, as to what the requirements are for management. We are very concerned that improper management could also affect our property values. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Arlene Galen, signed up against? Thank you. Ken Galen, signed up against? Noted. Bonnie Carter, signed up against? Thank you. Clayton Carter, signed up against? Thank you. Jacob Mulkey, signed up against? Thank you. Glenda Martin, signed up against? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This, I am Glenda Morton. I live at twenty-eight sixty-six South Neffright Way in Meridian, with my husband, Robert. And I'm, just want to go on record as saying that we agree with everything that's been stated, and in consideration of your time and patience tonight, I'm going to skip a lot of what I was going to say. But I am uniquely qualified to address one issue that has not been brought up. I am an apartment building manager in Boise. I have managed that building for almost twenty years, when it was my parents' property, and now mine and my sister's that live in California. And I do not want to say one single thing about being young, because I used to be. But I know the nature of apartment dwellers. To demean them would be wrong. But they're at a different station in life. Their comings and goings are frequent. Their hours are varied. I would say that many are college students. I've got grandchildren that are college students. It's admirable and it's desirable. But when we stand here, person after person, and talk about zonings and quality of life, and the impact that a massive amount of people on a small parcel of land is going to do for our community, I'm here to tell you they are telling the truth. Because these young people don't have their whole life invested into their homes. They don't pay homeowners insurance. They don't pay property taxes. I have seen our tenants at our building race in and out of the parking lots. They're not teenagers. They're not all college students. They're young. And it's just a completely different lifestyle. It doesn't mean they have tailgate parties every weekend. Many of them are young families, but I would challenge the assertion that they're empty nesters. Most are not. Some maybe. But we can talk about the compatibility of brick and mortar and aesthetics. What about lifestyle? Are we and Sutherland Downs, Muir Woods, to be thrown under the bus for the sake of this development? It's just a compatibility issue. They're not wrong. We're not right. It's a bad blend. It's a bad mix, and it won't wear well. So I ask the council to please consider the fact that you're opening the gate to all those other properties, all the way from Easy Jet, all the way down to Victory, that will be developed in a likewise manner. And I'm all, and I also know the pressure that I get as a property owner and manager of a multifamily unit development. The pressure to go into HUD homes because of the needs of our community is great upon the property owner of this type of development. We recently put two veteran people, units, open for veterans, because we want to do our part. There is a need. But it's dicey, and it deserves a lot of consideration.
Thank you, Glenda. Josh Altinger? Alsinger? Signed up against? Sorry? Well, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jason Adinger. I live at two-six-two-six South Tristram Way. I just want to go on the record for myself. My wife can't be here tonight. The house that I live at is actually between my neighborhood, Sutherland Farm, and Muir Woods. So I'm the single point. Hollendale is the road that goes through my house, or, excuse me, next to my house, and connects the two neighborhoods. And the things I want to speak on real quick, first, I want to thank everybody. And the things I want to speak on real quick, first, I want to thank everybody on what they said. I strongly agree with the comments from the neighbors, the several neighbors, the hundreds of neighbors here, and the several, several neighbors that they, they have, they couldn't make it tonight. I've seen a huge amount of traffic since we started construction on eighty-four. And then when they had other construction going on with the other apartments that were just put on Overland, a lot of people cut through the neighborhoods. And I spoke to one of the officers last time I was here, and he came up to me after the last meeting because of the traffic situation, because a lot of people run that stop sign by my house, and my kids are out there playing. I put up an IP camera so I can videotape it. It's when my, when my daughter gets hit, when she's a teenager, when she gets rear-ended or hit in the rear end as she's backing out after she's checked three times, that we have proof for the insurance company that somebody did run that stop sign. But I see lots of traffic. And I totally agree with they're gonna make a right out of there and want to cut through by my house, through Muir Wood, to get out to the Overland area or to Victory area, because it makes more sense than going up to Eagle in the light. And they're not gonna want to make a left. Everybody's making a left. It's bottlenecked there during school hours, two and, you know, work hours. So that's a huge thing. So that's the one thing I just wanted to point out. The next thing was precedents. The previous slide that you had with the, all the homes going down, or all the quote, "developing" land, I mean, people already live there. That word "developing," I don't know, you know, that makes it sound better, that you're taking people's homes away from them, they're single-family lots, and turning them into something massive. You know, if I went to your neighborhood, knocked down three houses or four houses and build up fifteen, am I developing it, or am I ruining your life? So I like how that word's thrown around. The last thing that I want to say is, nothing against Lisa. I know she's got a hard time. She comes in here, and there's a compromise that's being made, right? You, I mean, I know the private, or excuse me, the property owner has a right to develop that land, but the original intention was R4, right? We all know that. So they've, the only reason they've compromised, J U B, is because of the pressure of the several people in this room, so they've gone down to forty-eight. But it's a minimalist attitude. It's not, it's not, they're not advertising high-priced, high-end fancy apartment buildings. It's minimalistic. Anything, any improvements they do, it's just to satisfy us, to shut us up, so you will pass it. Now, I ask you, as an elected mayor, as an elected council, you know, I'm a district princeigman myself, for the Ada County Republicans, and a military member. You represent the people. You represent these several people here, and the hundreds of people that couldn't make it tonight. Make a decision in accordance with what's on your website, what you preach, which is build a meta-community for Meridian and the city of Meridian and the people. So support them, support the greatest good, support all these people, and listen to what they're saying, not just one, one person's profiteering interests and one company's profiteering interests. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Please don't do that. No matter how great of a spokesperson he was, I ask you to please refrain. And I will, I, I don't know if I used the word "several," but if I did, I apologize.
You did.
Okay. Well, please don't take that literally. I'm sure they did not mean to minimize the, the concern among the neighbors. So please allow me to correct that, and, you know, you don't need to quote it anymore. Tammy Esslinger, Esslinger, signed up against.
Gary Van Aken, Aken, back it. Thank you. Gary, please join us. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for making that clarification for us. My name is Gary Van Aken. I live at thirty-nine sixty-seven East Rajah Drive in Sutherland Farms. I'm representing myself and my wife. I'd like to thank the city council for your time and hearing us out tonight. I once heard, and I'll piggyback on this, that for every single person who writes, there are elected officials, representatives, there are ten thousand people who didn't have, who have the same view, who are afraid, or, or who are afraid to speak up. I hope that with the presence tonight, you take into consideration in your decision and recognize the neighborhood presence. While a lot of work has been put into the, put in by job engineering, I believe that this high density does not meet fit, form, or function of our neighborhood. This is not a "not in my backyard" case. It is just not the right parcel for this project. Job has tried to sell you that this is a high-quality building and project. This is not true. Our request is a requirement that all buildings and garages be composed of stucco and stone in greater than fifty percent aggregate to better fit the neighborhood as our homes were required. I would like a conditional requirement made such that the site plan be revised to allow for an entrance on Eagle Road by modifying the site plan to restrict the business parcel from two buildings down to one, or increasing the size or duplex to allow for the entrance. This is like the existing driveway from the existing residence that was there. The curb has already been cut for that. I would love to address the concerns with the school impacts, traffic impacts, safety impacts, lack of public transportation. However, from the planning and zoning meeting, they indicated it was not their jurisdiction or within their power to change these. Please know that this is not true. Your vote is exactly the control to keep the type of development, this type of development and growth within a reasonable framework. This is not reasonable for this parcel. Congratulations on being on Forbes' fastest-growing city in America. Most companies that grow at exponential rates have an extremely high probability that they will fail. They will outgrow themselves, meaning that they will fail. Who will pick up the pieces in five, ten, fifteen years from now? Approving the request before you is a recipe for disaster. I ask you tonight to reject this request that is set before you. If you approve it, please require that no more than two-story buildings be allowed as recommended unanimously by planning and zoning. Maintaining an R4 density, greater than fifty percent stucco and stone to meet the neighborhood, entrance on Eagle Road, independent management offices be required for each separate apartment parcel on-site with each building, unless you restrict the subdivision of the apartment properties and require them to be divided, require them from being divided and maintained as one parcel. As a side note, do you know that buses drive through our subdivision to avoid the main arteries because they can't get through? And I just want to, one real quick thing, we did have vandalism in our park this weekend. Somebody decided in the middle of the night to drive their car or truck up through the park. We got, you know, we're gonna have young kids, we're gonna have teenagers. The density is too high. If you extend that all the way to Victory at the same density, that's more density than our entire neighborhood put together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Timothy Norris signed up against. Do we have anyone in the other room? Just, yeah, can you? Michelle Skelton signed up against. Art and Pam Boris signed up against. Okay, thank you. Catherine Valant signed up against. Thank you, Kath. Jenny Staples signed up against. Thank you. Brian Barker signed up against. Thank you. Jean Montgomery.
John.
John? I'm sorry, John.
Usually my handwriting is pretty legible.
It might be my eyes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Tammy, it's nice to see you again. Thank you for having us, and members of the council. This project is part of, I live at twenty-five sixty South Teddy Avenue in Meridian, Idaho, with my lovely bride, Beverly. The project is a part of Sutherland Farm planned development approved in two thousand and two, which was a good deal of time ago. The, a lot of things have, were approved then that we seem to not be even discussing this evening, which I find rather interesting. The following information was specifically pulled from that development agreement. City staff requested that the park eliminate the houses that were proposed to be built around the park so that it would be open and accessible, especially for the proposed future commutational office multifamily uses. It's stated that the reduction of, or elimination of the houses would create a larger, open, unusable park for the entire subdivision. Staff found that the office, multifamily, townhouses, uses will be within convenient walking distance of the park and open space provided within the residential development. Staff also found that it would be a burden for the homeowners to maintain in the future. The city recognized that there are maintenance costs for the park and pathways for the homeowners of Sutherland Farm, and that the proposed EasyJet development will be utilizing these amenities. When other citizens outside our development use our park and pathways, they disregard protecting them as they don't have to have an impact on their personal pocketbook to maintain. They break fountains, sprinkle their heads, disrupt wildlife habitat, and drive vehicles through the park destroying the grass, and they do not pick up the waste after their pets. So I'm asking you to deny, or at the very least, do a minimum order to reduce the impact caused by additional use of these facilities. The EasyJet project is not contributing to any maintenance costs, and our homeowners are bearing the entire burden. Thank you. Say hello to Jan and to all of you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, John. Bev also signed up against.
She's got, and she has some words for you as well.
Hey, I was counting on that one, John.
We came for marriage counseling.
I'm sorry I can't help you with that. I can't even read his name, so.
Okay, it's all right. I'm Bev Montgomery. I live at twenty-five sixty South Teddy Avenue in Meridian, and I'm happy to see my council, council members and my mayor face to face, so I can kind of put a name and a face together. Mayor Tammy and our Meridian council, thank you for serving. I know that people think that you get big perks and vacations, and you fly off here and there, and all kinds of things, but I will give you thumbs up for some pretty darn hard work and lots of, very few thanks letters, and in fact, some very hostile people. And some of them might even be here tonight, I don't know. I will say that we, John and I, did deliberately choose to move here for a variety of reasons, not on into Boise, but to be here because we saw the potential of some wide-open space and some really exemplary building that can be done, that really does serve old people too, not just young ones. I have in my mind been developing one of these projects for years. I just can't, I haven't got anybody to listen yet. But, you know, I think tonight that we should talk about setting precedents. And as I talk to people who represent J U B as lobbyists and so on, and people who have had them do their work, including Meridian people, they have high regard for them. And so I know why you would, you have had good experience. But I say let's set a precedent tonight to put something in that whole big section that really is an exemplary model, not just an apartment house that is starting to be on every corner, and the brickwork only comes to my knees, two feet. So let's go on to say that there were some things I was supposed to say tonight. When I, when we looked at the two thousand and two schedule of Sutherland Farms planned development, I saw all that business, though. I thought it would be a good place to bring my retired husband and get him a job, but he doesn't know I, that was part of my plan. But anyway, that certainly hasn't been developed. But because on that plan, it says that any entrances to the city, and I don't think you consider the entrances to the city just right down here. I think you consider us clear out there on, on EasyJet to be part of your city. And it is to enhance and emphasize some really good features about our city, encouraging beautification of streets and parking lots. We are near I-84, which is a plus, and we don't want to make it a minus. We don't want to be quite as busy as our friends on North Eagle. That is quite a hassle. And we, and the plan does promote the design of attractive roadway entryway areas into Meridian, which will clearly identify the community. We had a hard time getting here on time tonight, and my time is up, but let's do, look at doing something as friends and neighbors and wonderful volunteers in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Mascom, Mascom, signed up against.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Mascoro, and I reside at two-eight-two-seven South Neffright, and I will be speaking for my husband, Adrian, and I. We are the second house that will be directly affected by this development, and ten years ago, we bought our first home about a mile away from where we're at now, and it took us ten years to be able to buy our dream home. And that is what we thought we had. Sorry. We moved in December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen. About three weeks later, we received our notice of the proposed development. Since then, we've tried to make the home our own, but knowing that this is a possibility has definitely deterred us from continuing to make this our forever home. We have three children who tend nearby schools. All of our bedrooms face are in the back of our house, which will face the development. And, you know, you, you think, oh, well, you can put up trees in the backyard to help obstruct the view, which I love my view, and, and yeah, we can plant trees for thousands of dollars, but I have a big garden in my backyard that I tend to every summer, and, and with this new home, I've, I've been able to make a bigger one, and if I put trees, I can't grow. So yes, I can put up patio blinds around my patio to get more privacy. And then what? We sit in a box while we have forty-eight, or probably double that, windows looming in our backyard, and so I guess we could move to the front yard and play out there. But guess what? We're gonna have tons of traffic coming down our street because we're that first street and the only street to get out back onto Victory. So as this project keeps furthering, I feel this box coming around our little, you know, our total life investment where we thought we would spend the rest of our lives, and, you know, yes, we're just one home, but we are great citizens to this community, and we would like to continue to live here and, and keep being great citizens and contributing. So thank you, and please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Dudley Parker signed up against. Amy Parker signed up against. Bryce.
Oh, thank you.
Susan Sims signed up against. William Sims. Oh. Thank you. Sorry I didn't pause there. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Susan Sims, and I live at two-eight-six-seven South Groom Way in Meridian, eight-three-six-four-two. I am here, I won't reiterate everything, that I agree with a lot of the concerns here. I've, we've made our life investment in this home in this neighborhood that we've lived in for ten years. I did see in the record that there was a letter from the school district stating that there was overcrowding in schools, and I do know that firsthand with my son being in an elementary school. I do know for sure that in our neighborhood and this property, there is no busing available to Pepper Ridge, and that it is, because we're in the one-point-five-mile zone, and so we do not get any transportation, which is going to increase the traffic for parents in this. any transportation, which is going to increase the traffic for parents in this apartment building if it's, if it's permitted, to come through our neighborhood, which is going to leave them and the kids wanting to play at the park and they're not going to be allowed to play at the park. So it's going to increase the tension there and add to the traffic. And we have a lot of kids on bikes that go to Pepperidge, even though we're over a mile away. The other point I wanted to make is that there was a public transportation suggestion when you build apartments that it's close to public transportation. This is not. The nearest bus stop for any city buses is over a mile away. We have a concern for the commercial building, buildings that are existing there in Southstone, that the traffic is going to cut through this commercial because EZ Jet and South Eagle back up so much that they'll be cutting through the commercial, existing commercial to get through to EZ Jet and that the parking that is going to be overflowing this proposed apartment building will go into that commercial area there. The other thing I wanted to say is that if this is approved as it is, that the office buildings need to match the architectural style and building material of the apartment buildings. And as they're proposed, the apartment buildings are only wood and plank siding and not, and none of the existing office buildings directly across the street have any wood on them. They're stucco and stone. And we feel that requiring wood siding on the offices would make those buildings incompatible with the vicinity and the existing commercial on the north side of EZ Jet. We would ask that you require the apartment buildings to have more stone and stucco to enable the office building architecture and facades to be compatible with the surrounding development. So I would just ask that you take a really good look at what we're required in our neighborhood to, to provide when we build and that make it compatible or better than what we're supposed to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. William Sims signed up against.
I talked about the best.
Okay, thank you. Todd Harper signed up against. Good evening.
Thank you. Todd Harper, 2839 South Neffright, here to speak for myself and my wife Jennifer Harper. Just real brief, I'm just very concerned about all the traffic that as is, we have too much traffic cutting through our neighborhood, overcrowding of schools, and just in general, lack of infrastructure, that traffic getting to work is nightmare, traffic coming home from work is nightmare, that basically adding to the congestion is just not something I'm looking forward to. And also, the way the complex is designed with access for future properties to have access to EZ Jet, for them to cut through will exacerbate the problem. So just, lack of infrastructure is my biggest problem and the way the current design is with, you know, basically a seed for future apartment complexes to the south of it, just not looking forward to it. That I'm, live three houses away from the proposed development and it doesn't blend with the neighborhood well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Donna Dildra? Dru? Signed up against. Todd Schaefer is in the other room. He didn't want to testify, but he signed up against. Jeff Bastar. I don't, I don't know how to say your last name, but maybe you'll say it.
I don't know how to say that last name. I don't even know anyone with that last name.
I promise I won't roll my Rs like my brother. First of all, I want to thank the mayor.
I was very concerned that there might be a relationship there.
Well, first, let me say what I say does not reflect upon him. First of all, I want to thank the JUB engineers for the compromise they did. I think it was sort of splitting the baby down the middle to come to this type of agreement. However, I think it comes to, the point I want to make is it's the right project at the right time. I am not anti-family. I'm not against low-income housing. I'm not against young people, but I think if you look around the room, most everybody here, here is well over 35. And the issue I think a lot of us have here is not the fact that there's an apartment complex being built or a business complex. It's, as people have stated, what's this going to be like in 10 and 15 years, 20 years down the road, when a lot of us, including me, are still living in my neighborhood? I've lived in Idaho my whole adult life. I worked in law enforcement for 30 years, 27 of those with Boise City. During that time, I saw a lot of great apartment projects come into light. Alpine Apartment, Overland Park Apartment, Lake Harbor Apartments, all those Glenwood Apartments, all those were great ideas during the time. But over the years, I saw those apartments start deteriorating. I saw the absentee landlords, the people who didn't care anymore about what their apartment complex looked like, didn't care that the siding or the paint was coming off, that the asphalt was all potted and had huge potholes in it. What happens is with apartment people is if they can't afford a home, they're going to move on to the next great apartment complex. And all these apartment complexes had all these great, you know, sidebars in, in, with them, gyms, close to businesses. That's the concern I think all of us have here is what's it going to be like when the new apartment complex gets built someplace else here in Meridian? Are those anchor businesses going to be there? Are they going to be boarded up? I think we have to look around and say, do we want half-empty, you know, mixed living use spaces? Stuff like that. Also, I think another aspect, I won't even go into the EZ Jet portion of the roadway because it's been covered immensely, is what about Mount View? Mount View is getting dumped on continually by overcrowding. They are currently up to, I believe, six portables. And if we bring more people in, that's more portables they're going to have in there. We just passed another school bond for our schools because they're overcrowded. Our schools are overcrowded. And Mount View, I hate to tell you, my son goes there, is taking the brunt of this growth. When Mount View first started, it was well-known for parents who were putting their kids there that there were probably 20 to 30% of the kids there did not live in the district. And now we're going to add to this problem? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Mr. Bastar Che, if you could just add your name and address for the record. I don't think I have a chance to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Jeff Bastar Che, and I'm at 2882 South Groom Way in Sutherland Farm.
Thank you. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
It's all right. Mike Devine? Signed up against. Thank you. Bonnie? Okay, Bonnie. Come on up and tell me your name. She signed up against.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Broussard. I live at 2662 South Teddy Avenue. What I like to do is bring to your attention the requirements of, of the findings that you have to make tonight. Section 115B6 for conditional uses. It says that the commission shall base its determination on the conditional use permit request upon the following, and it has items 1 through 9. 9 has A and B. So there's 10 items here. And I'd like to argue that eight out of the 10 findings are not met with this project or they, they cause impacts. So I'd like to go through each one of those. So this will help you make your decision tonight. That the site, one, the site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use to meet all the dimensional and development regulations in the district in which the use is located. They have met that requirement should you approve the rezone. So we'll give them that item number one. Item number two, that the proposed use will be harmonious with the Meridian Comprehensive Plan and in accord with the requirements of this title. Well, we've stated tonight how skipping a step in zoning does not meet the goals of the Meridian Comprehensive Plan and not providing a buffer. Item three, that the design, construction, operation, and maintenance will be compatible with other uses in the general neighborhood and with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not adversely change the essential character of the same area. This is very subjective, but you can understand that all these people are here tonight and have testified because it does not, it is not compatible with the area. And actually, you'll find that the planning commissioners also found that the project that was proposed was not compatible and it had, that's why they had to reduce the height requirements and the density, and that they were concerned with the buffer areas with the homes, and they were concerned about the traffic and school impacts. Number four, that the proposed use, if it complies with all conditions of the approval imposed, will not adversely affect other property in the vicinity. Well, we've spoken tonight that it will. The adjacent properties, they will probably have a value loss of their property, and we will also have that impact on traffic and with our school density. Number five, that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, schools, parks, police, fire protection, et cetera. Well, we know that the school district actually sent a letter that stated that they do not have room for the students that they anticipate coming from this project, that there was approximately $60,000 impact to them, where they will have to provide two additional portable buildings to fit new school, schoolchildren from this project. Number six, that, that the proposed use will not create excessive additional costs for the public facilities and services and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. Well, the taxes will have to be raised to provide those schoolrooms and there is an economic impact. Number seven, that the proposed use will not involve activities or processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glares, or odors. Well, we know that it will provide traffic impacts. Eight, that the proposed.
Bonnie, you'll need to summarize.
Okay. So that we don't want this to set a precedent. Number nine says that it, that this project should not set a precedent, and we've spoken that it has, that it, that it will. And that B, it also says that, 9B, that this should have a greater level of conformity to the development standards set forth in this title as compared to the level of development of the surrounding properties. So this project needs to exceed what's already existing in our area, and we have found that this project does not. So we just want to ask, how many of these 10 findings must be met in order for you to approve this project and what is your threshold? Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Atkinson signed up against.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. If you'll state your name and address. Yeah, I'm glad you called me. I'm so tired, I have to go home. It's past my bedtime. My name is Janet Atkinson and I speak for myself and my husband Patrick Flaherty, who is not able to be here tonight. We live at 4097 East Raja. I just want to, we're against this and I just want to state something that was stated earlier at the very beginning by the J U B representative, is that this project was in fitting with the neighborhood. This project is not in fitting with the neighborhood. If you look at the parcels around it, you have a subdivision across Eagle of nice one family homes. You have our neighborhood that comes up against the back of it, of one family homes. You have a small, smaller division Sutherland Farms that's right next to it, and you have some small businesses after that. I was sitting here tonight and I can't think of one multifamily development on Eagle Road that actually is on Eagle Road. There certainly is not one from Victory or Amity all the way to Overland. There's nothing like that on Eagle Road. There's some things that are a little bit off Eagle Road, but not right on Eagle Road. And those that are slightly off Eagle Road, closer down by the village or something, they are not in the entrance road to a subdivision. Unlike something that happened on Overland not long ago by Pepper Hills, they built fourplexes there, but those fourplexes are completely separate from Pepper Hills subdivision. There is no road that connects those. This is on the road that enters into our subdivision. We live in expensive homes that most of us have invested our life savings into, that we believe that it was going to lead to, we moved here, as everybody does, into subdivisions that they do for a certain type of lifestyle. This doesn't fit with anything around it. And like others, I am concerned about precedents. But if you haven't driven down Eagle Road and looked at this particular section, I would really ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Hayman? I think? I think it's Bryce. Could be something different. Come on up. If I haven't called your name, it might be.
It's not the age, but it's close to.
Yes. Thank you for joining us and for being upfront to correct me in my pronunciation.
Okay, well, my name is Bryce Herger.
Thank you.
I live at 2860 South Groom Way in Sutherland Farm.
I think I'm just going to start naming you guys what I think you might be. So, my apologies.
Not a problem. I thank the mayor and the city council. The proposed EZ Jet subdivision lies within the area of the, and within the Sutherland Farm Plan Development, which was approved in 2002. The development agreement is, I believe, is a legally binding document to the property, the property owner, and to the city council and its staff. And that within that agreement, there were certain findings, the need to be applied to any development that is within that agreement. One of those is to establish compatible and efficient use of land to the use of innovative and functional site design. Design and performance standards should be applied to infilling development in order to reduce impacts upon existing adjacent development. And some of the staff comments included that they are consistent, harmonious throughout the development. Our standards in our subdivision require a minimum of four feet of stonework on the buildings and the corners must be wrapped, and three types of building materials include stone, stucco, wood siding, and/or brick, multi-pitched roofs, and certainly any railings or iron railings. The commission and city council should determine what, if any, architectural design concepts and/or commercial should be incorporated into all buildings within this development. I believe it is your job to enforce the architectural standards as required by the existing Sutherland Farm Plan Development on the EZ Jet subdivision, or to completely exclude the EZ Jet subdivision through your motion from the Sutherland Farm Plan Development altogether. Within the city code 115B6E, and this is, I don't know this by heart, for conditional uses require that you base your determination on the conditional use permit on 10 findings that the proposed non-conforming use is developed to a similar or greater level of conformity with the development standards that's set forth in this title. I would ask as a member of the board of Sutherland Farm Homeowners Association, that you would place upon any project the condition that the standards architecturally are greater than the Sutherland Farm architectural standards. And I would also propose that perhaps you would include an advisory or inclusive capacity for the Sutherland Farm Architectural Committee to be included in it, in that review process when considering the architectural standards of any proposed project such as EZ Jet.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Catherine Nicholas? Signed up against.
Concerns of my neighbors, thank you.
Thank you. And Joyce Clark signed up against. Thank you. Those are, yes.
I didn't hear my name called out, but she spoke to my wife.
It was, she said that she spoke for you, so I didn't call it out, but you are against.
Can I go left?
Sure. I apologize for leaving you out. I, I just listened to your wife who said she spoke.
Which is good. I mean, that's what you should do.
Hi, my name is Adrian Moscoro. I live at 2827 South Neffright Way, two homes south of the proposed development. As my wife mentioned earlier, and other than the residents to the north of us. As my wife mentioned earlier, and other than the residents to the north of us, it affects us significantly. You know, we'll be able to see this development from our backyard. I mean, it's from here, 60 feet away, we'll have the first apartment building. But I just wanted to bring something up. A couple of weeks ago, and a gentleman mentioned this before me briefly earlier, I saw in the news a couple of weeks ago, it was very interesting and awesome to me was that the city of Meridian, Idaho is the number one city in America to live in. You know, and for varying reasons, you know, some, you know, reasons such as livability, you know, amenities, crime, traffic, cost of living, et cetera. You know, and I'd like to add to that, that I'd say that we, you know, here in the city of Meridian, number one city, because we have elected officials that, you know, will hear their citizens and their concerns, such as what we have here. That being the case, I'd like to discuss also what this development will cause as far as the concerns. One thing that I heard by the planners and the developer was that this development would not decrease the property values, and I think that that's not true. We've only been in this house for just about a year at the end of this month and about three weeks after we moved in, like my wife said, we got a notice that said that this development was going to be planned. Had I known that ahead of time, I would have never moved into the subdivision because I would not want to live adjacent to an apartment complex. That's not where we would plan to build our, or live in our dream home. So, if we wanted to move out, I know that's just how I feel that way, there would be others that would not want to move in adjacent to an apartment complex and it would be very hard for us to sell our home. So we would most likely have to drop the property value in order to sell this home. So yes, it does affect the property. I echo everything that everybody has mentioned here today and, you know, one of the things too is, what people have said before is the traffic is, one of the exits to the subdivision is right adjacent to the commercial areas, really close to the intersection of EasyJet and Eagle Road. And with that proximity, I mean, you can already, it's already congested as it is, but more congestion's going to occur there and, you know, multiple concerns is where's that traffic going to go? If people are going to get tired of trying to get out at that intersection right there, they're going to be forced to go out on the eastern exit and go right through our subdivision and cut to the east towards Cloverdale or to the south towards Victory. I do it and I live there. So, I mean, people that are going to be living in this apartment complex will do the same thing, especially if they don't have to work north along Eagle or west of Eagle and Overland, they're just going to cut right through the subdivision. So, a lot more traffic concerns that we're going to have. And another thing that was mentioned too is a park. That is owned and operated by the homeowners association. How are we to control the people that are going to be living there from coming to the park? So the city of Meridian is, should expect a higher volume of complaints from the citizens for people coming in that shouldn't be there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Those are the people who have signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to add to the testimony here tonight? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheryl Pascal. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Ron, 2523 South Jebelar in Sutherland Farm. What I want to do is, for the record, tell you what was said in the planning meeting, basically. And according to Yearsley, he said, "Our job is to work to mitigate with the issues from the property owners and come up with a reasonable solution." Now, we always knew that there was going to be an apartment, a planned development on this location, but he said, you know, "The traffic is bad, we understand that." But for him, what it comes down to is density. What's appropriate density for this location? And I have struggled with that most of the evening. So at this point, I'm kind of leaning to requiring only two-story apartments to help mitigate the density and the bulk and the mass. I think three stories will stick out quite a bit on that location. Fitzgerald said, "I have seen density done in places where it's allowed, but I'm a little concerned about this one." Because of how close that first house is, there's no buffer. So our four houses into a high-density level, I tend to agree with you wholeheartedly that a three-story house in the backyard of that, those several houses, is difficult and too much density too close to a residential neighborhood. I'm opposed to that. McCarville said, "There are problems with the traffic and the problems with the schools and we do what we can with the schools, but I agree that the three-story thing just seems out of place. It does not seem to fit with single and maximum two-story homes, and I guess most of them are single. It's just not a fit." Wilson said, "I'm glad my fellow commissioners are kind of in the same sort of mindset. The appropriateness of this development, and I think they're requiring two stories, we can make this more appropriate by making it two stories. Recommending two stories, I think I would support that." Oliver said, "After taking copious notes, it's really a gut check to make you think about what's appropriate and that looking at having a three-story building is not something I would want to be looking at." So I agree as well. That was in the planning committee. On a personal note, I am an empty nester. I wouldn't live in that apartment building, not with a three-bedroom apartment. Who's going to be there? Kids. There's not going to be empty nesters. I think that's totally ridiculous. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Would the applicant like to have their summary remarks and address some of the questions? If you'll restate your name for the record.
Thank you, mayor and council. Lisa Bachman with J U B Engineers representing the applicant tonight. Appreciate all the comments and concerns brought up tonight. Thought they'd make it a little easier on me tonight than last time, but they didn't. So, we'll practice and go through the various points that they brought up and I'll try not to reiterate too much. I took down some notes as the testimony occurred, so I'll do my best to kind of summarize a response. So, the biggest thing here is the density, I think, and the surrounding use and compatibility and buffers. And also the zoning and compliance with the comp plan and those types of things, they all kind of go together, so I'll speak to those. Also, the site plan change. As we talked about before, the site plan has changed based on the concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission staff and then also the neighbors. So, whatever site plan, just for clarification, gets approved tonight will be the site plan that the property would be entitled for. If there would be a change in the site plan that exceeds, I think, I think there's just a little bit of wiggle room, but not very much, we would have to go back through the public hearing process through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, as I understand it. Is that correct? Does that sound right? Okay. As far as the R4 zoning, this is one of those projects where it was a planned development, it was zoned R4, kind of with a blanket condition in the development agreement that said, "As the pieces of property that develop that are not single-family residential need to come in and request a rezone and a conditional use for anything that's not a single family." So that's exactly what we're doing today, is we're requesting that zoning to match the land use that we're proposing to do. The land use and the development, the layout, the features, the aesthetics reflects what is called for in the comprehensive plan for mixed-use development. It's a mixed use. It's, we're proposing multifamily and commercial. One of the suggestions I made at the last meeting is if, because this mixed-use designation in the comp plan actually carries to the south quite a bit, and everyone's asking, "Is this what we're going to continue to see?" And the answer is probably so. So unless the future land use designation is changed to something different than mixed use, it would be hard to imagine anything else being proposed. So I just wanted to point that out. So if they're an organized group of people, if they want to come in and request a change for that, I would highly recommend it for future projects that come in. I think I talked a little bit about the reduction in density, zoning the property, calls for mixed use. As far as the buffering goes, is there any way you could bring up the vicinity map showing the surrounding parcels? Okay. It's kind of hard to see here, but if you look at the site in relation to the surrounding area, to the east we have Neffright Way that buffers the project between the single-family residential area and the multifamily. We also have EasyJet to the north and then into the south, that's undeveloped property. So the roads act as buffers. We're also putting in landscaping around the vicinity of the site. Really the only property adjacent to the site is the one that you see. See if I can do this pen thing. Is this property right? I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing. Can you see that? The property here and along here for this all right here is future mixed use in the comp plan. This is our project right here. And then this is the single family. So really the only abutting property is the one here with this red mark. And then we are buffered all the way around with landscaping and open space. We have open space all along the frontage of EasyJet and then two, two-story buildings along the south boundary here. The houses within the development are one-story and two-story. So when they look out, they're not going to see anything different than what they're seeing in the single-family neighborhood portion of the project. That's why we made the change. That's why the Planning and Zoning Commission required that because of those concerns. Traffic was another concern that was brought up. The Ada County Highway District staff report was written, we're okay with the conditions of approval. Back when this development was originally proposed, it required, it had a traffic study that required signalization of the intersection with EasyJet and Eagle Road, and that has been put in place. There was a recent analysis done on that intersection during peak hours and determined that it's operating at a level of service A or B at that intersection right now. Let's see here. There's currently about 582 trips on EasyJet, according to A C H D's report. The proposed project, we've taken away about 200 trips with the density reduction that we proposed. If it were all changed to a commercial, there would actually be quite a bit more traffic going through the development. I guess going back to the traffic and the buffering and the uses, one of the things I thought of is people were talking about the transitioning areas. Well, the, what do you transition from a single family to commercial? Typically that's multifamily. So with this being two-story multifamily buildings between single-story and two-story single family, that's what we consider a transition. So, just wanted to bring that up. That popped in my mind as I was talking about traffic, sorry, about kind of going off track there, but see where I'm going. As far as the maintenance and ownership goes, there will be an office in the clubhouse. There will be contact information for the management company that will oversee the property. I know that was a concern. As far as the HOA fees in the shared open space, that is a civil matter of whether or not, you know, they pay HOA dues and coordinate with this development. That can be worked out outside of the public forum and kind of at the final plat stage when we submit our C C N Rs. As far as school overcrowding goes, actually if the development developed as single-family residential, there'd actually be more children in, on this parcel of land than with what we're proposing. Typically there's 64 students per 100, single-family detached homes. And for multifamily, it goes all the way down to 20 per 100 units for multifamily. So it's a difference of about three kids. So if it were developed as a single-family development, you would have approximately 13 children. With multifamily, you're looking at about, well, since you can't have 9.6, about 10. So it's pretty comparable in terms of what the impact would be to schools between single-family and multifamily. And the whole thing about, I don't want to say against apartments or renters, because I think in the testimony, they did a good job at, you know, not discriminating or making it sound like they don't want those kinds of people in their neighborhood. They went about it, you know, saying it in a more politically correct manner. But actually this development, the rates aren't going to be cheap. They're going to range from $750 to $1,050 a month. It's going to range from one-bedroom to three-bedroom apartments. They're not going to be low-income apartments. See, going back to, I was going to talk about the three-story versus two-story, but I think I covered that okay. Like I said, Sutherland Farms is one-story and two-story housing and we're proposing two-story housing. As far as the property value decrease goes, there's actually, isn't any evidence to support any reduction in property values as a result of being near multifamily. One of the comments brought up by one of the people was that it's a question of livability. Actually, a very big component of livability in a community and one of the reasons why Meridian has that aspect to it is because there's housing choice. That's a huge component of livability. As far as the aesthetics goes, was my time up? Sorry.
We would like to hear about aesthetics.
Okay. I'll cover that. That should be my last point. So with the conditions, what we're proposing is kind of a mix of what you see in Sutherland Farms development as well as the commercial development to the north. With staff's condition and P N Z's recommendation to add stone accents and stucco to two feet of the building around, I believe it's 50% of the building. Kind of brings in both of those elements together from what you see in the surrounding area and we don't have a problem with that condition of approval. One thing I'd like to point out as well is that we will be required to go through design review before we apply for any building permits. So staff will be looking at that very closely and making sure that it is compatible with the area, that it does complement what's going on out there and that we have delivered what we have indicated in our elevations. So with that, I think I can leave it at that unless you have any more questions for me.
Mr. O'Tree.
Certainly. I'm going to follow up with questions on issues that were brought up. Issue of lighting was proposed.
Okay, well, the lighting along EasyJet, there's existing lighting, it's decorative. As far as lighting within the development, it can be night sky lighting. It's not going to be anything out of the ordinary. It's going to fit within the neighborhood. It's going to be pointing downward in the parking lot area and on the buildings. It'll be minimal, but not minimal enough to create a safety issue.
There was some speculation that there'd be off-street parking. Do you anticipate that with the number of parking spaces you're providing?
Oh, good point. So as far as the parking goes, like I said, we are proposing above and beyond the minimum required parking. Currently, EasyJet is signed for no parking. Neffright Way, there, I suppose there could be parking, but it'll be fenced on that side. So I don't know why people would park on Neffright Way and then walk all the way around onto EasyJet and go into the subdivision that way.
There was mention about the fence on the neighboring side to be something- more than a vinyl fence, but something on the line of a masonry wall to, both for visual as well as noise.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was having a hard time understanding where exactly they were talking about, if it's just the property along Nefright Way, or... I would need clarification on where that would be located, but in the area, it's vinyl fencing. So we would be matching what's out there and bringing that in.
There were several suggestions about this particular project being in compliance with the CCNR architectural requirements that are in the surrounding area, which apparently is more than what's anticipated and that staff was recommending.
I'm not completely familiar with what their architectural requirements are within Sutherland Farms, but I would guess that it's pretty much in line with what we're proposing. They have wood. They have stone accents. There's stucco, you know, all of the things that we're proposing.
And finally, on the lots that you show on your preliminary plat along EasyJet Way, or the one large lot, I guess, is that proposed to be a common area and stay as a common area?
Along EasyJet?
Yes.
Yes, that would be the common area, parking and open space.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? I know Mr. Bird indicated his questions had been answered.
Madam Mayor, I'd like Bill to address the question that came up about how do you ensure that some of these things happen? I think we all understand that.
Sure.
Coming from our legal counsel, it might be better.
So...
He has asked our attorney to answer the question about, once the council makes a decision and approves a preliminary plat, how that is enforced.
So after the council's decision is made, findings are created by the planning staff that are also incorporated into a development agreement, which is a contract between the city and the developer. So those findings and those development agreements are recorded against those properties. So any property owner knows what's supposed to be built there, what it's supposed to look like, which includes the site plan. When a person wants to build a building, they must then come in and get a certificate of zoning compliance, that what they're building is compliant with what's required, and then they have to submit the plans for that. Those are then reviewed, and if they comply with what's allowed, then a building permit is issued, and they can build the building. If they build a building that isn't allowed or don't come in and get a building permit and just build a building without any approvals of any kind, between the ability to enforce it civilly, we also have the ability to enforce it criminally under our code enforcement regulations. So we have two different means in which to enforce someone building something outside of what's approved, and also a way for to enforce something, someone building something without any approval permit of any kind. So either way, the city knows what's getting built, and the city has means to address it if it doesn't meet the requirements in the development agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Teneri. Mr. Zaromba.
Madam Mayor, I have two different questions, and the first one actually may be a repeat of something that Councilman Roundtree asked, but would you go to the revised site plan, please? Okay, I don't know if this is what he asked, but the two areas closest to EasyJet that are defined by dashed-line rectangles, what are those going to be?
Councilmen Zaromba, open space.
And there'll always be open space?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Second, would you go to the area view? That one, thank you. I appreciate a lot of the research that many of you did, and particularly the young lady who studied the plan development ordinance very thoroughly and spoke to that. Let me make a comment before I go on, just to clear up some confusion. In 2002, the city had a planning and zoning ordinance, and we had a separate landscape ordinance and a separate sign ordinance, and I think we had a separate parking ordinance, and we had a separate plan development ordinance for anything that didn't fit into the planning and zoning ordinance in the size of two or three buildings. If it was going to be bigger than that, we had a separate plan development ordinance. In practice, in that plan development ordinance, an entire project was zoned with one zone. This entire development was zoned R4. It was. But the other piece of the plan development, and some people have touched on this, was what we called a use exception. In other words, even though the underlying zone was R4, the developer was entitled to develop, my recollection was 10% of it, into something else. And usually, that was discussed before the plan development was approved. But one of the difficulties with that, as many of you have found out, is that when somebody goes to do their due diligence to find out what else is on this property, the answer comes up R4. And there wasn't, there were, even then, there was confusion about how do you know when and where and what the use exception is going to be? So again, I appreciate the lady that did some study here. If we're looking at what we're looking at now, you can see pretty much the development, and I think there's more to the east that we're not seeing. The point that she brought up is, according to her research, this was not given a 10% use exception. It was given a 15.5% use exception. Her point is, the piece that is already developed as R4 and LO and CC are 14 or more percent of that 15%. And the question is, the use exception has already been used up. How can this not be the underlying R4 then? Because the use exception isn't available if that math is correct.
Thank you, Councilman, and if staff can correct me on this. I believe the use exception was for the property to maintain the R4 zoning designation and be able to have different uses. Do I understand that correctly?
Madam Mayor, Council, if I may respond, yes, it was actually 20% was the percentage of the site could develop with different land uses in the R4 district or whatever district it was zoned. So this property, there were 11 lots on the original preliminary plat that were approved to develop with office slash multifamily uses. This property consisted of four lots on the preliminary plat. The remainder of the lots were to the north across EasyJet, the remaining six. Those seven, excuse me, they came in and did a modification to the conditional use permit, the plan development, a couple of different times, and changed those land uses that were approved for office and multifamily to other residential and commercial uses. So what the applicant is requesting is in line with the approved plan development for this site.
I would just add, for everybody's benefit, we don't do it this way anymore. A few years after this, we wrote a Unified Development Code, we call it, that incorporated it all. We found with the previous codes, sometimes one of them would require something that another one contradicted. And by putting them all together in the Unified Development Code, not only did we get rid of some of those conflicts, but we also established the precedent that when the developer annexes and zones their land, they actually identify each different piece. There is no just, it's all R4, but there's an exception somewhere. They identify what there's. So unfortunately, this is a leftover ghost from the past. But I will say, we aren't doing it this way anymore.
Madam Mayor, if I may add to Councilman Zaromba's thought on that, these particular lot numbers were called out in the approval for the office and the multifamily uses. This isn't just a random, we were allowed to do X amount of percentage of the site this way. It was actually called out on this property by the lot numbers on the preliminary plat.
You know, I understand that maybe it's called out on these particular lots, but when the other ones came in and changed, that should have been as consideration. You know, I do understand that we tried to find all of these older planned developments so we could clean them up, so they actually reflected what the use was intended when the planned development came through. This one apparently was missed. But when the other lots came in, I thought Joan's testimony was very compelling. To see the history of the office space and the decline from the 19.4 to... Or, yeah, I didn't write all the numbers down, but I do believe that as the other ones were redeveloping, it should have had an impact on these four lots and what uses they should have. The impact should have been readjusted as we look at a whole plan development. I don't know how you unring the bell and what the entitlement on this land is, but I do have a better understanding of the concern from those that have done the research and what they believe their property rights are as well and what they should be entitled. So with that said, I'm not sure what you can do with that as council grapples with, should this be approved? Is the intensity too much? And what is appropriate in this area?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Can you pull up your, I guess it's your newest site plan? Sorry, I'll get on, beat the mic. Can you, on the right-hand side on, I forget the name, can you outline where the fence is? Proposed, where you would propose to put the fence along that? You had indicated the vinyl fencing, and I'm just curious as to where, if it's that solid black line, if it's the dashed black line along the sidewalk. I'm trying to gauge where the fence would be proposed to be.
Thank you, Councilman. It would actually be along the eastern property boundary. There's an existing fence out there that's, I think it's three feet tall. Does that sound right? Yeah, three feet tall. So we could put in, we're not proposing a fence on the eastern boundary, but we can put one there if so desired.
You had indicated that there was a fence there.
A three-foot vinyl fence, correct.
Sure, can you, can you outline, right where you're running your red dot is where the three-foot vinyl fence currently is?
She's actually pointing to that right now.
Thanks, Sunny. Follow-up question then, I guess. Sunny, maybe you can run that line one more time for me, and it seems to be there's some space where they're, so it's really just right there and there? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
I just have a question, Lisa, regarding the school, the children statistics that you used. Are those Meridian statistics? Because it seems to me that Meridian families have two to eight children per single-family household. I'm not sure about apartments.
Well, it's actually from the Urban Land Institute. I didn't look at Meridian's numbers. But I guess even if we just used a straight-across comparison, it'd still be about the same number of kids per 100 units if it was developed as a single-family or multifamily. Typically, people that live in apartments are people that don't have kids or they have less kids, one or two maybe, tops. And with it being limited to three bedrooms and more of the one-bedroom and two-bedrooms, there's just not going to be as many children.
Council, any other questions for Lisa? I did want to know, on your traffic study, did you do a whole new traffic study considering all the different changes from 2002? Or did you just do an intersection analysis?
Good question. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we didn't even meet the threshold to do a new traffic impact study. The original request, I think it was expected to generate about 1,100 trips. That was at 76 units. And with our updated development, we're under 1,000. So we don't even meet the threshold to do a traffic impact study, nor did we originally. The level of service analysis that was done was actually done by Ada County Highway District, and that's what's reflected in their report. So that didn't come off of a study that we did. That came off of their analysis.
Any response to the letter that the school district sent? I know these are suggestions that the district can't require it, and neither could the city in terms of the cost impact and the amount that in revenue this kind of development would need to add. I'm sorry, this is the first letter I've seen that's been written like this, so I'm not really sure how to take it. But any response to this?
Mayor and Council, it is pretty unique to put a number to it like that and talk about the impact. But the revenue that this project would generate in property taxes would likely exceed the property taxes that would be generated by a single-family development. So really, when you're looking at what they're asking for to come in with a single-family development, it's like comparing the same.
I think they're asking for what looks like an donation land because they cannot ask for an impact fee because the state doesn't allow that. But, and that is something that we hope the legislature will start addressing. But in lieu of that, they are trying to figure out. All this tells me is the schools in that area are overcrowded, and that anyone in this development would have a possibility of not being in their home school district would have to be accommodated somewhere else, which again is an additional cost to the schools to do that. So what is your answer to that?
Mayor, actually, I don't have an answer to that because if they're, are they going to require that of every development that comes in the city and just indicate that they're overcrowded? And that they're going to, there's going to be a donation amount set? I don't know. And I can't really speak on behalf of the client and give you a definitive amount and let you know, yes, we can donate this much towards this cause. Like I said, the impact of schools on the development that we're proposing versus a single-family development would be very similar. It is a unique letter and indication from the school. I agree.
Well, and they raised some really important points, too.
It is.
Unfortunately, our state hasn't given any tools to address.
Agreed.
Ms. Mylan.
And Lisa, I mean, we don't know what they're going to do. But my guess is the way the schools are filling, as full as they are overcrowded, yeah, this is probably going to be a lot more common type of letter that we're going to receive from them. Because they don't have anywhere to put the kids. So they can grow some more schools.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor.
You want to move your microphone up?
Oh, I will. Lisa, was there discussion with regards to some of the other mixed-use community uses to the south? And the connectivity through this particular project? There's no access to Eagle and there's no access basically east or west. So everything to the south also will be funneled through these two parking lots. How does the plat address that future problem?
Thank you, Councilman Borton. It's actually a requirement of both Ada County Highway District and city staff to provide that stubbed connection and to reduce the access points along Eagle Road. It carries a lot more traffic. It's closer to that, the intersection with EasyJet. And it's actually a lot safer to have it off of EasyJet as opposed to Eagle Road.
Madam Mayor.
Just a fact.
The follow-ups, I agree with that. But I'm just trying to gauge your comfort with this particular design adequately allowing all of that traffic to flow through the way it's designed here with the roundabout and the office parking up front. There's a variety of ways it can be designed. I'm just gauging if you think this is the most appropriate way to accommodate what's going to be a lot of traffic to the south accessing EasyJet through this project.
Mr. Borton, I could see another access coming off of Eagle Road. And not everything relying upon this parcel for access south of EasyJet along Eagle Road. But there's really no telling as those properties come in what, where they would propose access. You know, I think it's good, you see a stub street there to the, I'm going to try this pen thing again. Did somebody else draw that on there?
I don't know.
Well, there's another stub street right here. This is the mid-mile. So I could see another access coming in on Eagle Road. Oops, this pen's a little bit slippery. Lining up here somewhere and connecting into the parcels. But we do feel like the design and the layout does accommodate the site layout. It was actually pretty challenging to design and to get the circulation through there as we went down to the two-story and tried to meet open space and all that good stuff. So as far as traffic goes and connectivity, this is what we would typically do is stub to adjacent properties to reduce the amount of access off of roads such as Eagle Road.
Counsel, any other questions? I guess, Mr. Neri, while the applicant is still at the podium, I would ask, can you maybe give an overview of what the choices are here tonight? This is an entitled piece of property that's part of a planned development that was already approved in 2002. It's in front of council tonight because of the rezone to clean it up. The CUP is typically something that the Planning and Zoning Commission does. But it was also brought forward because of the rezone. What is in front of council tonight in terms of some of the decisions or opportunities for discussion?
The issue on the zoning, to me, is really, the original zoning that was approved, and Councilman Zeremba was correct, as was Sonya, the zoning was approved at a particular level with exception by agreement. And so the planned development process allows for this level of development now. The zoning is intentional by the city in the quest for the rezone to match it up for the future so that everybody knows what's allowed there. But even if you don't approve the zoning, I don't believe they can't ask for the same density based on the original PD. Now, planning may disagree and I certainly would suggest you ask them to when we're done. But I don't believe the zoning is really the issue. It is a CUP which does require compatibility with the neighborhood. So you do have the ability, the one that's most common and some of you may recall was the discussion we had regarding the cellway apartments in North Meridian. Very similar circumstance, housing was approved, the adjacent parcel was to be multifamily. Multifamily doesn't always have to be apartments, but multifamily doesn't always have to be duplexes. But multifamily is anticipated on a portion and commercial was anticipated on a portion. What the council did in that case, and I was re-reviewing the district court's opinion on that case that we had, and basically the council has the ability to condition the approval based on some of the concerns. Not a concern necessarily that we don't want it, but it could only make sense if it worked in this way or if it's compatible with our building standards. Now, in the cellway case, we didn't have building standards then, but we do now. But that was one issue the council wrestled with then in 2005, was building standards, lighting, buffering, fencing, all of those things to make it at least as integrated as realistically possible into the neighborhood. But it was always anticipated in that case, as well as this case, that some density in some multiple buildings would be built on this site. They're proposing something different. It's the council's decision on is that difference still compatible? Or could it be compatible based on additional conditions that might be necessary? P and Z made the decision on three stories versus two. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I purposely made him talk a lot.
You have the ability to grant additional or require additional conditions that the developer can then decide either that is incompatible or unreasonable or that they can live with those conditions and proceed forward with the project. Does that answer your question?
I think it lays out some options for the discussion. Sonya, do you have anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Neri has said?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would just add to what Mr. Neri said about the use in the zone. The whole point of the land use exception that we've spoken about is that they're allowed to do a multifamily use or some other land use in the R4 district. So a rezone is not necessary for them to go forward with the multifamily development. A conditional use permit, however, is required because of the original planned development. It required them to come back for detailed approval of a conditional use permit prior to development. So a conditional use permit is required. And then our UDC also, because they're requesting a rezone at the request of staff, we asked them to rezon the property to clean up, like you said, more or less, the zoning in this area. Because they're requesting a rezone, then that also requires conditional use approval for the use in the zone. But primarily, the CU is for the detailed approval.
So if they, if this was just a development of office buildings, they would not have had to come through a CUP? They would have just, would they have had to?
Yes, they would have had to. Whatever development goes in here, office or multifamily or both, had to come in for detailed approval because they only received conceptual approval. Really, the only thing before you tonight, I mean, like you said, this property is entitled to develop with office and multifamily uses. You do have a say in how it develops, density, building types, height, that kind of thing.
Okay, Counsel, was that helpful? Do you have any further questions for Lisa? Do you have any further comment?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
The council wants some discussion, the council wants some discussion while the public hearing's open. I will move that we close the public hearings on RZ-15-012, PP-15-016, and CUP-15-017.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 7B. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor, just a comment. We're trying to undo the past here and we're not going to be very smooth and it's not going to be very easy. But one option we have is to deny the rezone. And then that takes that out of the equation. It still doesn't solve the issue, but it puts us in a situation where we can then condition the entitled use of the property, which is office and multifamily, am I correct?
Yes.
And you can condition it in whatever way we desire. That help? Okay, so we can condition it in whatever way we desire and not have to contemplate the rezone. That's one option. And that condition can be based on density, it can be based on architecture. It cannot be based on, we don't want apartments. We can affirm that what's been said here this evening will be encompassed in the development agreement, which is a contractual document between us and the developer that can be enforced both civilly and criminally.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, Councilman Roundtree, if I may just clarify, there is already an existing development agreement on this property that was, went into effect with the annexation. A change to that is not proposed tonight.
Then it would be in the findings of facts.
It would be in the findings for the conditional use permit, yes, thanks.
Which are still enforceable.
Yes. In order to change, let me just add to that. In order to change any of the provisions that were approved, if you choose to tonight, they would have to go back and modify that original conditional use permit planned development.
Thank you. So just food for thought, this is a tough one. Apologize for whatever past action might have created this, having been here for far too many years. But be that as it may, we have to deal with it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Couple of comments to Councilman Roundtree's point. First, thank you all for being here tonight at nine o'clock. I know you probably have other things that you would rather be doing tonight. But this is local government in action. This is what makes Meridian so great. We have a developer who has a plan and they bring forth that plan. And then you, as our citizens, get a comment on that. It's incredible. I know it's nine o'clock and we all want to be home, but this is fascinating. So thank you all for being here tonight. And you shared really comments about your homes. You know, from a council perspective, we always look at housing as a science. And you really brought an art piece to it. And so I'm forever grateful for you guys being here tonight. To the comments, I think that the proposed project can be complementary. It's not the same as your neighborhood, but it's, I think it can be complementary and we can handle that. I think the buffering, we can handle. I think with the site planning, we can handle. The multifamily, I don't have a problem with multifamily. It's part of what makes, again, Meridian so great. For me, the biggest issue is the zoning. And I think that in light of Councilman Roundtree's comments, if that's something that we could handle and address here tonight, that's something I'm favorable of. That's my two bits.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
With the compatibility question, it seems that we had multiple comments. I don't want to use the word several, but multiple comments. I'm not going to count them. About quality, structure, design, whatever. And some specific suggestions that it be, that this development be consistent with the standards that are in place in the surrounding neighborhood. Which, I don't have those, I don't know what the specifics are. We have what staff and the developer has recommended, but apparently that's not quite there. Sounds like more masonry, more stucco. I'm leaning that way as one of the ways to help this be more compatible. Certainly want the buffering to be of the type that will in fact buffer the lighting, in fact, the night sky type lighting, which is downlit and minimized, but yet providing the safety for all of the folks in the neighborhood. Those are a few thoughts I have right now. Hopefully, the rest of you have a few more.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I like the idea of, you know, denying the rezone and keeping it R4 because if it goes to an R15, and even if we, this preliminary plat is approved, in my years of being on here, I've seen it changed when, by changing of ownerships. And an R15 zone is quite a bit lousy, a little more than the R4. And they don't, wouldn't have to come back in for a conditional use, am I not right? R15.
I'm not sure I understand your question, Mr. Bird.
If we, if this is zoned R15, they wouldn't be here for conditional use, would they?
Yes, they would.
They would, okay, thank you.
Because of the conceptual approval previously, they're getting detailed approval now.
But once we get that, so. My thoughts is deny that. The preliminary plat, make sure that that's set in stone with the common lots up there next EasyJet. And then we can put conditional, we can put the conditions on the conditional use permit as far as everything we want to do. That would be my suggestion.
No, I don't have a vote, but I have a voice. And I have, I think I've already said a little bit about my concerns. Certainly, as the plan development comes in and even though it was years ago, there are many that have noted, a lot has changed since the original approval came in. Even the corner of- Even the corner of South Eagle and Victory has changed in the comprehensive plan since that time, if I recall right. The stubs to the south and how that's going to flow and I know... I quoted one of my favorite city councilmen last meeting that we're not in a hurry and some of these things really need to be further looked at. But how will traffic flow in that area and what is the plan for the two stubs to the south? And how is that going to work? I know it's hard to clean up something that we've already approved, but things have changed. If the buildings were... We've opened up the two lots on the north side and where on the east side, that apartment complex could have been in one of those two areas that would have minimized some of the direct impact or maybe it's a buffer compatibility opportunity there. But it still begs the question, how is the traffic as the lots to the south going to interact with whatever we put here and how is that going to work so that you're not going to have a negative impact on the rest of the already built environment in that area? That is a concern. And even the stuff that Lisa had pointed out to the east, it stubs into a residential area that has access directly to those streets where cars are backing out of their driveway. And that is a concern because people will be going there to access Victory when South Eagle Road is congested. There were a lot of good points that were brought up today in testimony that I think does need further consideration. I just don't know what options are in front of the council because this has an entitlement already.
Is that a question, Madam Mayor?
It's a perplexed question, yes.
You can choose... Mr. Neri, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll try to speak for you since you're missing your voice. If you choose to deny the conditional use permit, you would need to include reasons for your denial and what they could do to gain your approval, especially since there's an entitlement on this property. But it is in your purview to, if you don't like the site design, if you don't like the density, if you don't like the building locations or open space locations, to direct them to do something different with it. You might even suggest a continuance of the project for them to redesign. You know, you might require some landscaping adjacent to that and residence. There's a lot of things that you could condition it or just request a redesign or include some ideas where they can redesign to gain your approval.
Mr. Bird.
Sonya, I got another question for you. Down there on the northeast corner of Amity and Eagle Road. Didn't we, when they come in, didn't we make them rezone to R four? Didn't we zone that to R four, that development that come in?
Are you referring to Victory and Eagle or Amity and Eagle?
Amity and Eagle.
I am not sure, Councilman Bird. I don't have that on my zoning map and I can't think off the top of my head what that piece is.
I think it was an R eight.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm having a really hard time with the density of this project backed up to R four, which is the reason why all these folks are here today. They did the research, it's zoned R four. My heart goes out to you guys. I wish there was more that we could do. But as far as, you know, there's not enough of a transition. If it was duplexes, possibly just something with less density that will have less impact on traffic, on schools, on, you know, the views in their backyards. I just don't see the compatibility myself. So that's where I stand.
Yeah, it's the northeast corner I think he was asking about. I believe those are R eight.
The nesting swan, off the corner. I believe it's R eight.
I thought it was R four.
It... I don't believe the development agreement's been approved yet or if it has, it was just recently approved. It hasn't officially been annexed yet, but it's in process.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Gordon.
I understand the rezone merely to be administrative to the extent that it's... Whatever the final decision is, the rezone is to then match that final decision for the office and for the density of the multifamily. Approving it or not approving it doesn't change. It doesn't seem to make sense to not approve a rezone because if there were to be an approval of the other applications, the rezone should naturally follow to match it. The question that, as I see it, is does the plat and the CUP make sense? And one of the primary concerns that a lot of the neighbors have hit on and the mayor hit on as well is that connectivity to the south and the lack of a public roadway through the center versus the two private roads that we can anticipate being wholly inadequate to funnel traffic through as the properties to the south develop. And the access to the Eagle Road as those properties develop is unknown. And as the mayor pointed out, the access heading east through the residential neighborhood isn't necessarily the route that you want to funnel this, if and when that develops, so... That's one of the primary concerns I have with the plat. I think it also addresses some of the concern that the public has with compatibility and the proportion of this project that is multifamily and the type of multifamily, meaning the density of the multifamily, in proportion to the office component, which is a much smaller piece. So I struggle with the plat as it's designed as being set up for failure. And in particular, having that traffic funneled through these private roads and roundabouts adjacent to open space that we intend these residents to utilize.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, if I may make another clarification. There's a lot of misinformation floating around tonight, so I'd just like to clarify while we're there. The staff report only recommends one vehicular cross-access to the south. The other was pedestrian. So if you do choose to go forward with this tonight and then you are thinking that you want two vehicular connections, please make that part of your motion. This is not a cross-access right here, only this over here. No, that's just a backup area for their parking. I just wanted to clarify that.
And I appreciate that. I think that makes the problem and the concern even greater.
Me too.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zaramba.
On the same subject, in the same area, the other views that we've been seeing only have that center curb cut on EasyJet. The curb cut that's over by the office buildings doesn't exist. Is that being requested and would it be approved by ACHD that close to Eagle Road?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Zaramba, ACHD has approved the accesses. I believe the reason that you see the cutout here is because that's already right-of-way owned by ACHD, whereas this isn't.
I'm sorry, that clarification on the traffic does make it even worse. To have someone funnel through areas that are also parking stalls that people will be backing out of is crazy. I'm sorry. But, yeah. So one of the options I would imagine is you could totally deny the CUP and the rezone and with specific reasons why, or remand it back to planning and zoning with specific criteria of what the concerns are in terms of materials used in the design of the units. Certainly the traffic flow and the connectivity to the south, the placement and perhaps placement of the apartment buildings and putting more of the open space to buffer the single-family homes. You can even look at the... An R eight is also multifamily. If you go to the duplex designs, there's several different options I think that the council can choose to go. And now I think I'll probably just shut up. But I can't make a motion, so you guys will just have to do. And gal.
I'm a guy.
Now you know how to make sausage. You get to see us make it.
Question for Sonya.
Mr. Roundtree.
The parcels to the... To the south, have they been annexed? Any of them?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, no. Those are all in the county right now.
That's helpful. Thank you.
In the comprehensive plan, is that neighborhood, mixed-use, commercial or community?
It is mixed-use community.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
I'm still struggling to find enough to make sausage, so I'm going to throw a couple of things out here. We're kind of going... Let's help design this, which we never want to do. We don't want to practice that because we're not very good at it. But there are some things that I think this project lacks and some things that have been pointed out that the project creates in addition to compatibility with the existing uses around it. Again, there's the school capacity issue. But this traffic flow, traffic access is a real issue with properties that are yet to be annexed into the city. With this property, one of the key ones that will provide access to those properties until such time as there's an additional access off of Eagle Road. Without knowing, without adequately analyzing what can happen to the south and implying that to the concept that's going to be on this property, I have a difficult time approving any cross-access without knowing what's the potential future impact on that southern property and its use. That's one thought. Still trying to find some more things to think about.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Could we reopen the public hearing to allow the applicant to address some of the comments that they have heard from the council tonight? Perhaps they want to continue this for a couple of weeks and allow them to make some changes and come back to us? Come up with a better plan.
Mr. Kavner, I think even if they came back with a change, it would be, it would have to be substantial enough that it should be remanded back to planning and zoning for any changes to be done first at that level. Unless you want to see it, discuss it before you remand it back, but...
Fair enough.
That's my opinion. I believe I'm speaking in line with procedure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, absolutely. I don't know if Ms. Bachmann has been able to hear all of your concerns and would say, you know, if they have a preference. Sometimes applicants would prefer you deny it and deal with it in a different forum. You have Mr. Lucas here from ACHD. You're talking a lot about access. I don't know whether they have a future plan or whether a roadway system like the records drive extension that exists now off of Eagle Road between Eustick and River Valley Way is a solution that's even considerable. I don't have any idea. But you're right. I mean, if really that you think they're significant enough... But, but you're right. I mean, if really that you think they're significant enough that really a change at this level is not appropriate, but to remand it back, at least, I think as Sonia stated, give them enough for the Planning and Zoning Commission to know what you want. And I think, again, I was just suggesting that maybe Ms. Bachmann has a preference as well. Maybe she thinks they can't do anything that we're talking about. I don't know. I hate to waste everyone's time if they can't do anything that you've suggested up here.
I'll make a motion that we reopen the public hearing. To allow the applicant to come up and address some of the comments and...
And I think that was a motion?
I thought I said, yeah, I make a motion that we do that.
Okay, I have a motion in second to reopen the public hearing on item 7B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Lisa, we've had some substantial discussion up here, and Mr. Kavner suggested that we get your comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Lisa Bachmann with AUB Engineers. You guys talked about a preference. If you're looking for specific changes or us to do some additional research, looking at the future roadway connectivity for the parcels to the south, things of that nature, specific layout changes you'd like to see, I would recommend that you remand it back to P&amp;Z to have them review it, because I think it would be a significant enough change to where they should be able to make a recommendation off of the updated site plan. Not that we want to keep coming to hearings and doing this over and over again.
I'm sure everyone behind you would agree to that.
Right, but that would probably be the right thing, rather than trying to redesign everything. However, like I said, we would need some guidance on what exactly we would be doing between now and being remanded back to P&amp;Z. We've reduced the density. We've taken it down from three to two stories. What else would you like to see? So if we can get some guidance that way, we can go back and see what we can do and work that through the P&amp;Z and then be back before you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zaramba.
I know I have concern about the traffic circulation and considering the properties to the south.
Is your microphone on?
It is, but I'm not very close to it. Would you consider coming up with a design, the current apparent central access that shows us a bump on most of these drawings? Would you consider making that a public street that connects to the south as a stub street?
Councilman, we'd have to talk to the client about that and look at doing that. That could further increase the issue and the concerns that some of the neighbors have with having everybody coming onto EZ Jet and using that, using that access to access their properties from the south.
To me, that doesn't change your suggestion, and it only changes what driveway they come out of. If I understood what you're proposing, everybody would come out of the curb cut, everybody to the south that uses this as an access would come out of the curb cut that's closer to Eagle. And I'm not changing the quantity of people that would come and go. I'm just trying to make it easier. I think being farther away from the Eagle intersection would be better, and I would suggest making it a public road.
Okay, so what you're saying, just so I understand correctly, make it a public road, the center access?
Mm-hmm.
Where we're showing the circle, and then would you want the access to be closed on the commercial area or have that connect? Because what we're doing, if we close that off, then we're going to be pushing all of the access out on Eagle Road, and there isn't a signalized intersection until you get to Victory Road. EZ Jet is a signalized intersection, and as properties develop to the south, it would... Have you ever gone into a commercial development and you had to go around and out and go around... You're smiling. Some people know what I'm talking about. So, I mean, anything that we can do to improve the traffic circulation, we can definitely look at. As far as making that a public road, I can't, I can't answer that, but that's something I can take back and talk to the client about.
Appreciate that.
And I'm not sure that that would...
Well, I'm not sure that's the solution, and actually trying to imagine what is going to happen on those properties to the south, it's too soon to even go there, I guess.
That's the thing, is it's not annexed in, it's still in the county, so really, all that we can go by is the mixed-use designation that's in the comp plan.
Well, and my recollection is the people of those properties all got together and had some input to the comprehensive plan. The designation there is something they've already asked for.
Right.
But how that's going to design out, I don't know, and how that would impact the access through your property, I don't know.
At least would allow you to work closer with ACHD and even know what the access opportunities are on those properties to your south, so you can better answer some of the questions and tell council whether it makes sense having a public road there or not.
Mayor and Council, might I suggest, I don't know if Justin Lucas is familiar with what the approved access is, but my guess is, as I pointed out, it'd be at the quarter mile, probably to align with that access to the southwest. Would it be okay if he came up to speak to that, if he has anything to add?
Council, do you want to have that information now? Is it going to impact what you do, or do you want that for future information as a consideration for others? I just...
I think that's a consideration that...
Yeah.
That JUB needs to take in.
It's not Justin that I don't want to hear from you. It just, do we need to prolong the misery?
Okay. I am, I'm... So, Mayor and Council, just so I understand correctly, you would like us to go back, work with ACHD, find out what the future access plan is for this remaining area, and then at least report that back in our next, or reflect any changes in our site plan if it doesn't, because it might not impact the site plan.
Madam Mayor, I think my question would be, how does that work into the circulation of traffic through your property?
Okay.
And, and I'm willing to hear yes or no on the, on the public street, but I'm just suggesting that.
Mayor and Council, I think if that's, if we're limited to that issue, I don't know that we would need to be remanded back to P&amp;Z, depending on the outcome. Maybe we could do it that whatever we find in our research and coordination with ACHD, if that does impact the site plan, then we would be remanded back to P&amp;Z. Is there any way that we could work something out that way, or?
I've heard it's not just the connectivity to the south and public or private, that there's concerns about density and material compatibility.
Madam Mayor.
Buffering.
I was not intending that to be the whole list of questions.
Yeah.
I'm just getting my foot in to get that one question in.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, I'll give you my two cents. I guess that's what we're all gonna do right now, whether it's worth a two cents or a nickel. But what I would like to see, Lisa, and I, this is a fine development, I just don't think this is, it fits. So, I would like to see R8 zoning, which I think that's the proper transition, and whatever multifamily that you can fit in there. And then, as the neighbors were wanting it to be the same design in accordance with the subdivision that it's in, those are my main things, I think.
Mr. Kavner.
I think to counsel...
You want to talk into your microphone?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I think engaging the Architecture Committee from the Homer Association, see what the, what their standards are. Again, my assumption is that you're going to be really close on that, but if I'm wrong, it gives you an opportunity to have that discussion.
And since we're just giving you ideas to consider, in light of the school district's letter, you might even think about mirroring Southern Downs in terms of the 50 and older, or maybe it's 45 and older. Don't want to offend anyone. But that you address some of the concerns of the impact it will have on the school overcrowding and that sort of thing, and certainly the compatibility of a more mature audience or neighborhood that would be more synergistic to the development across the street. Just a suggestion.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, if I may clarify again. I've heard this mentioned a couple different times on the R8 zoning, multifamily. The UDC does not allow multifamily developments in the R8 district. You could still, without the rezone, do the multifamily as it sits today, but I would not recommend rezoning to an R8 for a multifamily development as it's a prohibited use. Thank you. However, you could restrict the density through the R15 district.
Using the R15 with a specific density?
Yes.
Any other comments from council as the applicant looks for that feedback on, and certainly the suggestion was to work with the neighbors and maybe get some additional ideas as well? Anything further from council? We did reopen this to have a conversation with the applicant. Anything further?
Madam Mayor, I'd just suggest to Lisa to get the, a copy of the transcript and review that.
We opened it to address the applicant. Unless council wants to open it up for further. Okay. Okay, anything further from council?
All right, I move we close the public hearing then?
Second.
A motion in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes must carry.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, question is continuance or remanding? Seems to me a remand might be in order.
I think that's what you said, yeah.
Madam Mayor. I move that we remand this item back to planning and zoning to hear the applicant's approach to the comments that they received this evening and start it over through the process.
Second.
Mr. Neri, we probably need a little bit more than that.
Because there have been so many comments, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I mean, if you could at least summarize that, I think that would help. What I heard was access to the south, our compatibility with the neighborhood in regards to design. I think you talked about buffering between the neighborhoods, the density between these two neighborhoods, and what's the appropriate zone. I think you also mentioned whether an MC or a CMU wall might be appropriate in sections, and again, in regards to access to the south, whether an alternative street or collector street or neighborhood street needs to be created to be able to provide access not just to this property to the south, but also access to the southern properties between this property and Victory Road. I don't know if I missed any, but something like that would be helpful, I think, to the applicant and to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And I concur. Thank you, Bill, for that summary. And I'll add that to my motion.
So that was his motion in second agrees?
Amen.
Yes? That was a yes, Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Thank you. We appreciate all of you bearing with us this evening, and the action just taken by council is pretty much, they don't agree that this is compatible and have remanded it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so the applicant has an opportunity to redesign what they are looking for approval for. And so, it will be reposted for a public hearing when that time occurs. So, council, I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes.
Madam Mayor, are you assigning that a specific date back to the commission? Or do we need to?
No.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of council, if you, is it our right to pick a specific date? I don't know what the commission's schedule is, but if you do that, you wouldn't have to re-notice, but there's a lot of interest here, and re-noticing may be more appropriate.
I think re-noticing is more appropriate. And I think they have a good network. They'll get it out to, not the several, but the many. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
So, Planning and Zoning can decide. So Planning and Zoning can decide.
Okay, council will reconvene and move to item seven C into public hearing for the village departments, AZ fifteen dash zero one two, CUP fifteen dash zero one nine, and MDA fifteen dash zero one one. And we'll open these public hearings with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for a development agreement modification, annexation and zoning, and a conditional use permit. The overall site consists of sixteen point six-two acres of land. It's currently zoned CG and RUT in Ada County and is located at two six zero zero and two seven zero zero North Eagle Road. The majority of this site, the red area here, sixteen point four-four acres, was annexed in two thousand and three as a pathway for annexation for Redfeather Estate subdivision to the east. The site has remained a residential agricultural property since that time. The existing development agreement requires any future uses on the property to be approved through the conditional use permit process and for a baggage street to be provided parallel with Eagle Road. A conceptual master plan is required that demonstrates interconnectivity, transitional uses, and access points. The applicant is requesting a development agreement modification to remove the requirement for conditional use permit on all future uses and to include a conceptual development for this site as required. This is a copy of the proposed concept plan. Annexation and zoning is also requested of the point three-eight of an acre of land property. That's this little tiny one here that fronts on Eagle Road that's white, with a CG zoning district consistent with the future land use map designation of mixed-use regional for this property. A conceptual site plan was submitted as shown that shows this portion of the overall site developing with a retail, commercial building pad. That's approximately in this area right here. The applicant requests this site be included in the existing development agreement for the larger portion of the site. However, because the current development agreement also includes the property to the south where the Great Wall Restaurant is located, staff recommends a new development agreement is required for the subject property to include the surrounding land that is included in the conditional use permit request. A conditional use permit is requested for the development of a retail, commercial, and multifamily residential uses on the subject sixteen point six-two acre property in the CG district as required by the current development agreement and the UDC for a multifamily residential development in the CG district. A concept plan for the overall site shows three retail, commercial building pads consisting of thirty-five hundred, four thousand, and seven thousand square feet along the frontage of North Eagle Road and one fourteen thousand square foot retail building east of the building pads on a total of five point two-three acres of land. And that is this whole area right here, if you can see my pointer there, running on Eagle. The commercial portion of the site is proposed to develop with phase two. The multifamily residential development is proposed to consist of a total of three hundred and thirty-six dwelling units. That's a hundred and thirty-six one-bedroom units and two hundred two-bedroom units within eleven four-story structures, ten of those being thirty-two plexes and one being a sixteen plex on eleven point three-nine acres of land on the eastern portion of the site running on North Records Avenue. Associated garage and carport structures and two eighteen bay storage unit structures are also proposed. Parking complies with UDC standards for multifamily developments and for the clubhouse building. A minimum of one point nine-two acres of qualified open space and site amenities proportionate with the number of units in the development is required to be provided in accord with UDC standards. A total of two point one-five acres is proposed in accord with UDC standards. Proposed amenities include a clubhouse with an exercise room and enclosed bicycle storage. A bicycle, let me back up for a minute here, which is easier to see. This plan right here, the center of the develop is where all the common area is proposed. If you can see my pointer here, this is the clubhouse, swimming pool, playground area, and then a large open space area. The clubhouse contains an exercise room, an enclosed bicycle storage. There is a external bicycle repair area right here, a swimming pool and a tot lot with play equipment, two shade structures, one within the pool area and one by the playground, and a fifty by one hundred open grassy area north of the pool in accord with UDC standards. Only one public street access is proposed to the site via North Records Avenue. And that is right here. Other accesses are proposed via cross-access driveways between adjacent properties with access via Eagle and Records. The adjacent sites, if you can see here at the northeast corner of the site, will have a cross-access to Records. And there will also be a cross-access to the north here. And then cross-access is proposed to the south also. A thirty-five-foot-wide landscape street buffer with a ten-foot-wide multi-use pathway and pedestrian lighting is required along Eagle Road and entryway corridor with the second phase of development. And a twenty-foot-wide buffer is required along North Records Avenue, a collector's street, with a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk with the first phase of development. Records Avenue is anticipated to be constructed by Center Cal, the developer of the village of Meridian, in the near future. However, if the property develops first, this developer will be responsible for extending the road. Conceptual building elevations are proposed for the multifamily structures, the clubhouses, excuse me, clubhouse, garages, carports, storage buildings, and garage maintenance building. No building elevations were submitted for the future commercial buildings. Building materials for the multifamily and the clubhouse consist of fiber cement horizontal lapped siding and stucco with architectural laminated fiberglass roof shingles. All structures on the site are required to comply with the design standards in effect at the time of application for certificate of zoning compliance. So this is the clubhouse that you're looking at here. So this is the clubhouse that you're looking at here and the multifamily structures. Commission did recommend approval of these applications. Jim Conger, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Folks that commented were Martin McWilliams, Brenda Ross, Dick Ross, Mark Rogers, and Ann Sorenson. Written testimony was received from Jim Conger in response to the staff report. The key issues of discussion by the commission was the concern in regard to the project's compliance with open space standards. The applicant has, since the hearing, submitted a revised open space plan to me with calculations that do demonstrate compliance with the UDC minimum standards. Key commission changes to the staff recommendation. The first was to modify condition number one point one point five to require the street buffer and associated pedestrian pathway and lighting along Eagle Road to be constructed with the second phase of development rather than the first phase and to include a new condition requiring the existing structures on the site to be removed prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the site, and that is condition number one point one nine. There are no outstanding issues for city council, and there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions Mayor and council may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Sonia. We want to remove the CUP approval for all uses on that front out there when you could have drive-throughs and everything else hitting onto Eagle Road lights and stuff.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, we used to do that a lot, require conditional use approval before we had specific design standards so that we had some control over what was built on a property. A drive-through, for instance, would still require conditional use if it's within three hundred feet of a residential use, a residence, or another drive-through facility. And a conditional use would still be required for any uses in the UDC that would still require conditional use in the CG district.
That's what I'm trying to get across, because if you read that, like it says in our deal, is all CUP approval for all uses. Okay?
Yeah, no, it would not be for all uses.
But it means for what requires conditional use permit still is in effect?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
Hey, is the applicant here?
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jim Conger with DevCo, four eight two four, West Fairview. Thank you for allowing us to be in front of you tonight. Again, we're super excited to be here with this multifamily project. First, thanks to your planning team. We've gone through a lot, and we appreciate their insight and cold experience to get us to where we are at this point with this approval process, and we are grateful that we do have a recommendation for approval on this project. I'm going to skip the details and things that I had previously presented. It's been a very busy night, and Sonia was very thorough in, I think, details. If you do have questions on some of our amenities, like our spectacular community center, coffee shop environment, and hip things of that nature, more than happy to go into it. It's on me. There we go. We're both driving, that's still on me. So first and foremost, we're pleased to be here with our approval at the approval for recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and their unanimous complimentary feedback on the architecture. I think that's one of the important items to the success of this project. The design has a fresh, modern look that will differentiate our apartments from some of the other apartment homes that are currently on the market. Our typical resident is going to be a little more urban with a similar profile to a condo buyer with the proximity to the village and the Kleiner Park and things of that nature. To further illustrate our community, I'm going to just quickly go through this thirty-second video, and I might need Sonia's help starting this, and I promise it's thirty-two seconds or less. Kind of give you an open feeling of our layout, our open space, and our middle programs. If you put your cursor on it, it should fly. I can't run a cursor for some reason off this end of it. There we go. Bottom left.
Oh, that's sorry.
Yep, thank you.
It's late, Jim.
It is late, and I keep coloring red on it. Will it let you click? I've only tested it about fourteen times between yesterday and today.
Can you hit that play button up there? I don't know that we're going to either one of those.
That's going to be sad. Yeah, it keeps saying marker. How do I get the marker off?
Erase it.
Well, I'm not.
Erase it.
Pretty good.
I'm just erasing the marker, which is not very impressive either. No dice.
The razor doesn't work to play either.
Be smarter than me here. I keep hitting that, but it keeps hitting that.
Oh, let me try that. I don't. How do I turn it on?
Yeah, it's.
Well, I turned it on there. Let me try something here real quick, Jim.
It is spectacular, however, but we just may not get it.
I don't know.
There it was up. Put your mouse on it one more time, would you? Well, go back to that other frame. Now go down and put your mouse over it, it'll show up. There we go.
There it is.
Better be spectacular, it was a long wait. Thank you, Sonia. So our setbacks are record match the existing regency or exceed. Most of them exceed their setbacks from records. And our open space, the big emphasis of the core in the center, and then our buffers to the outside perimeters with single-car garages and, you know, no structures at all. And this project's trying to bring the four-story or the density into that village core area where I think you have enough restaurants and other items to preserve it. Perfect, Sonia, I'll get back to this.
For the next slide, Jim?
Yeah, little bar that disappeared on me. One more slide, there we go. Now I'm in control, I'm with you. So in closing, we have one condition of the staff report that we're all in agreement with, I guess just needs to be finalized, which is the twenty-foot buffer, as Sonia indicated, will go with the phase one multifamily, the construction of it. The thirty-five buffer, thirty-five-foot wide buffer goes Eagle Road with the phase two of the commercial. The condition that was put on us from the Planning and Zoning Commission, their recommendation, was to clean up the ugliness along Eagle Road, which is the existing houses, the existing structures, and all of that is going to be forced upon the phase one multifamily, which we are total agreement with and should be done, and we would want to do that anyhow. So that added layer of condition is certainly acceptable, and with that, I would stand with any question, for any questions.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for Perry. What is the secondary access? You know, we have the primary access out onto Records. What is your emergency backup?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, our emergency is we have emergency to the north, either west of Norco through our commercial in a temporary, and we also have it to the project that you just previously approved that is directly north of us, which is more of a townhouse-type environment neighborhood, but it was all rental-type, right, units?
Okay, so those are existing, they are existing.
Existing easements. Yep, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you, I'm glad you got your flyover working.
I feel a lot better, thank you.
I did have a couple of people that did sign up when I called your name. If you'd like to provide testimony, I'd invite you forward at that time. Steve Smiley signed up as neutral. It's nice to see you, Steve.
Good to see you, Mayor Tanny.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
For the record, my name is R. Steve Smiley. I live at three six six two East Granger, directly behind this. My concern is I'm not here speaking in opposition, but, you know, as I look more closely at the design, I do have a couple of concerns about the design, and I'm not quite sure the correct way to address them. I'll just say them. The hour is late. Couple of things is, number one, we have a very large development of well over three hundred units with all of that traffic easing in and out of one single contact point on Records, which will dramatically increase the traffic into Red Feather subdivision. And I am very interested that adequate traffic mitigation procedures be put into place because as the people in the previous hearing indicated, that would create with all of the traffic from the village, all of the traffic from these apartments, all of the traffic coming into the residual businesses there, plus the park. And if there was a concert in the park or anything like that, I can imagine that it is going to be bumper-to-bumper traffic of everybody taking shortcuts to avoid Fairview and Eagle coming right by our doorway. And that really has me concerned, and I would like to see what exactly will be done to prevent people, once Records is put through, from basically using our subdivision as a thoroughfare to avoid Eagle Road. And I know that having Records there will be a great advantage because the access will be easiest to get to, to either use River Valley to access Eagle or to come down to Eustick or to come through the village and through the roundabouts to get back out to Fairview. But I do worry about the access to Eagle Road and the single access only going out to Records. I would much prefer some kind of an access that would get us into that shopping area there on Eagle Road to prevent possible bottlenecks. The second concern I have is just one of mitigation. When the regency apartments were constructed, we had quite a bit of problems with people, construction workers getting started at six in the morning and playing loud music until ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, and that went on all summer, and I know they're not supposed to do that, but we know they do. And also, the whole issue of landscaping, sound mitigation. I think it's really important that we have adequate landscaping on the frontage that would mitigate the sound, mitigate some of those things so that we can have the peaceful enjoyment of our property as well. We don't want to have a noisy bang-bang engines going off and things like that going on in the middle of the night. There's enough residual sound from Eagle Road. So those are concerns, and I would really like to hear the developer address those concerns, especially the idea of access and the idea of sight, sound, and visual mitigation there so that we don't have people up on the fourth floor looking into our bedrooms.
Thank you. Reed and Linda Hanson signed up against. And Patrick Flattery signed up against as well.
Maybe they signed up on the wrong sheet.
No, I didn't. Is there anyone here who would like to provide testimony on this item? Counsel, any questions for the applicant or for staff? Mr. Zerumba.
Could we look at a site?
Are you turned on?
Could we look at a site plan that, yeah, that's what I was looking for. Excuse me. Between the commercial area and the residential area at the very north end, is that an access point? It looks to me like that's a continuous roadway. Is it going to be gated or is it going to be open so people can use it?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, if it's right here where you're referencing, that'll be open.
Here to the left, there. That, is that a drive-through, I mean driveway or pass-through or whatever?
This is all a driveway here.
Okay. With no obstruction.
No obstructions.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Zerumba, yes, there will be a secondary, not just a fire, but a secondary access. We're going to have to maintain the machine here, but that, it's not letting me draw on it, which is, it's kind of like my mouth, it doesn't want to stop, and I always want to draw. But back on that site plan, we have a secondary access out and a cross-access to the existing commercial that's there. So we will have more than one, putting fire aside, from a daily access point, there will ultimately be more than one point. The other would go out to Eagle Road.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Madam Mayor, now that he's gotten seated, I do have another question.
Hey, I've been sitting all night, I'll take the workout.
The four-story buildings, I realize are set back beyond a driveway, beyond the garages. Would you be able to give me an idea of what is the distance from closest four-story building to a house that would be on the other side of Records?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Zerumba, that is an excellent question and was a point of confusion at the first part of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing from neighbors and the commission. So it is imperative that everybody understands that you've already approved the regency apartments, which are the three black buildings that are four stories tall that are approximately twenty-two point nine feet behind the back of curb of the future Records Road that's not built yet that backs up to the existing Red Feather. Our project, which is north of Red Feather, does not back up, and we took a little different approach from neighborhood meetings and other things about a different buffer. We are no closer than one hundred and twenty feet to our four-story structure versus the twenty-two point nine feet that you previously approved that backs up to the Red Feather homes. We have these county residents beside us that are on very large lots. Their closest home is six hundred and forty-five feet away. So we aren't adjacent to Red Feather.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Jim, I have a question similar to what was asked of the last applicant. As far as the letter from the school district, did you see that, and do you have a response?
Councilmember Milam, I don't know that I have a response. I feel that that letter is getting written a lot, and that helps the bonds, measures, and passes bonds for future schools. So I believe we should always worry about our schools and continue to push bonds, and I think that's a standard letter that we're seeing, not only in Meridian but in Boise. So I don't know how to respond to that, but it seems like we're always over capacity, and they continue to educate our children, which is a wonderful thing.
Thank you. It is a wonderful thing, and it is a growing concern of our residents that have bond fatigue and would like to see additional tools developed that help growth pay for the impact they have on the necessary services. So it is a discussion and one that has no answers right now because the state doesn't give us any tools to answer it. But we're hoping that the state will, will enter into that dialogue, because they're not adequately funding our schools, and so I think our schools are trying to make a statement.
Madam Mayor, I couldn't agree more on the funding, the statement, and how everything's somewhat managed, but we probably don't have enough time to solve that, for sure.
Yeah, I guess we can't expect you to stand there and solve that larger issue.
I would love to, I'm not sure everybody would love my ideas.
I'll let Mr. Smiley. Mr. Roundtree.
What's the timing on Phase Two?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Roundtree, that is a great question. We are working through, of course, we control it as well, so it's not like we're looking for a separate developer or something of that nature. We have, we need two key end-users for us to be able to pull the trigger on that and get comfortable enough to finish the site plan to bring in front of you the conditional use permit. Short-term is the answer. With commercial, is that six months, or is that 10 or 12 months? We don't believe it's years, but we believe it's very near in the short-term, for sure.
It's kind of funny you use "pull the trigger" considering what's in that area right now. You are cleaning that up, is that what I understood?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that condition was recommended with planning, zoning, and we actually have no issue at all with that. We will clean it up, even for ourselves and our multifamily, so we don't have to look at it. But we are removing the houses, the structures, cleaning it up. Tremendous amount of cars, the lobby gone.
And maybe you might want to have our public safety officials tell you what has been found there in the past that you might want to be aware of.
I don't think we want to know.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
On the request, or the direction from Planning and Zoning to defer the landscape buffer on Eagle Road to Phase Two, I'm a little uneasy with that. I would like to see sometime certain that if by time X, it's, you don't have Phase Two ready to go, that you get the buffer and the landscaping done. I'd like to see that for the benefit of the future folks in the apartments, if that moves forward, as opposed to being in a situation where you get half the apartments built, and things do what they did a few years ago, and then all of a sudden we've got that wasteland out there yet on Eagle Road. I'd like to see it done. So I guess your comments on that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Roundtree, we have a strong opinion on that. Part of our issue with this is, this canal's got to be tiled. We've got to get our vertical, first things first, we've got to get a couple anchors to figure out our site plan, which we don't have figured out with the commercial. That will help us set whether we're getting buildings towards the front or parking towards the front, working through your UDC code. We have vertical elevations that got to get figured out, you know, past that buffer. So between vertical elevations, we have several gravity irrigation pipes. We have the giant tiling, which is going to require basically a bridge, but it's tiling, but you can see the box in the back. We have a significant amount of abnormal improvements. It's not as simple as just putting a sidewalk across that, because our frontage is relatively short. We probably wouldn't be sitting here having, I still have problems with the vertical grades and making it work. But we have some very significant issues that we have to have a commercial site plan in place for to do. Not sure we quite own to where the last sidewalk ended, but I know why they ended it there. But we will have to tie into it at our expense. So I guess with all due respect, we don't think we're that far away with the commercial, and the commercial needs to be planned. Everything needs to be appropriate. If we scab in a sidewalk that's not right, the next thing you know, we're tearing it back out, and the people are used to walk in, and now they don't have it to walk on. So I guess with all due respect, we'd love to clean the site, but we really need to have the proper plan, and we have to spend a tremendous amount of upfront money to actually get that sidewalk in.
So I guess my question is, are you opposed to setting a date certain at some point, for some point in the future? Or not?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Roundtree, we are opposed, and that was why, I think I used even the words respectfully opposed, because we are respectfully opposed to that timeframe. We think it's very soon, but even if it is 12 months instead of six months or 14 months, it's still not getting in until someone goes and drops about a, you know, 90 to 110 grand in the tile end of the ditch and several other items, and that's not gonna, that's quite a burden to get that in.
I don't mind a candid answer. If it's no, it's no.
It's no. Yeah, I beat that bush, didn't I?
Mr. Zerumba.
Just sideways observation. The building that's seen to the right of the canal in this picture, the Great Wall Restaurant, when they were approved, their access to Eagle was made temporary, meaning that when they have a baggage road or something that they can access, that Eagle access is supposed to go away. I think it was always expected that they would access south. You're saying you're going to have to tile this canal? Are you going to cross-access with them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Zerumba, no, there is no intention to cross-access with them. They don't have any existing easements, and we know, we've got to design and take all our access to the north. We are saying tiling, because it, even though that would be our buffer and the commercial could come over, we're assuming we're going to have to tile that just from aesthetics and safety and everything that goes with that. It's one of the last stretches that's not tiled.
Okay, so the only thing you're going to bridge is to get a sidewalk, not to get a vehicle access behind these buildings?
Very much correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think that water amenity for your pad to the south would be, you could improve it to have a water feature.
We might not be opposed to that, we like that.
Outdoor dining.
There you go.
Enjoying the traffic of Eagle Road.
You could do something with that water.
Just thought I'd plant a seed.
Madam Mayor, we appreciate that, and when we start getting one more anchor, we're going to site-plan it, and maybe we'll leave that portion open. That'd be nice, nice on the budget.
Everyone's looking for fine dining. Fine dining.
Fine dining.
Any other questions, design suggestions? Anchor tenant ideas? Okay. There's nothing further? Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearings on AZ 15-012, CUP 15-019, and MDA 15-011.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing on Item 7C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Question for Mr. Nary. We would go with the MDA, and then the zoning and the CUP, in that order, or do you do the zoning, CUP, and the MDA?
Look, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Byrd, I think the zoning is such a minimal part. I think you do the development agreement first, and then the others.
That's what I thought, okay. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I would move that we approve MDA 15-011, and to include all staff and public applicant comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this application. We're starting with a development agreement?
Yeah, the modification to it.
Any discussion from council? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve AZ 15-012, the annexation and rezoning of .38 acres of land to CG zoning district.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Item 7C2. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve CUP 15-019, the approval of the multifamily development consisting of 336 dwelling units on 16.68 acres of land in CG zoning, and to include all staff, applicant, and public testimony.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item 7C3. Would this be where the modifications, are you approving everything as suggested by?
Staff?
Staff.
Applicant.
Well, staff and applicant, are you on the same page?
Madam Mayor, is the council recommending any changes to the staff report?
No.
Okay, any discussion from council? Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, Item 7D is a public hearing on PP 15-018. I'll turn this, I'll open the public hearing and ask for staff comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This before you is an application for a preliminary plat. The location of this specific project is south of West Eustick and west of Linder. A little history on the project. In 1994, the subject property was annexed and zoned as R4 as part of the Turtle Creek subdivision. At the time, the subject property received preliminary plat approval for 40 lots as part of the Turtle Creek preliminary plat. Also in 1994, at the time of annexation of the subject property, a development agreement was entered into for this area. The first application submitted by the applicant was approved in March of 2007 as preliminary plat 06060. The final plat was approved in May of 2008, and the applicant had until April of 2009 to obtain the city engineer's signature on the final plat, and failed to do so. The preliminary plat expired at that time. Although this preliminary plat is new, the development agreement provisions tied to the annexation of the subject property are still in effect. The summary of the request, the applicant, Conker Management Group, has submitted an application for a preliminary plat consisting of 11 single-family building lots and one common lot, 2.54 acres of land in the current R4 zoning district for the proposed Sundial Circle subdivision. Qualified open space and site amenities are not required to be provided for developments below five acres in size, as per the UDC. However, the applicant is proposing to construct a micro-path lot. If I would show you here on the site plan. The applicant is proposing to construct a micro-path lot here that would connect to the already existing path that's going to stop from the Sundial subdivision that currently exists. Access for the development is proposed from West Whitelot Drive via West Turtle Creek Drive, which is a residential collector street, and then the proposed roadway will terminate in a cul-de-sac. As you can see, here are some architectural renderings that were provided by the applicant as to the architectural style and materials to be used as part of the development. Summary, the commission recommended approval. Summary of the commission public hearing, Penelope Riley, acting as the agent, responded in favor, received a letter from Mike Webshman in opposition. John Llewellyn commented, and we received written testimony from, again, Mike Webshman and Penelope Riley, the applicant. Key issues of discussion by the commission were the pathway connection to the existing Sundial subdivision, the number of proposed lots in the subdivision, and the proposed lot sizes. There were no key changes from the commission, and there are no outstanding issues for the city council. Again, written testimony since the commission hearing was received by Michael Hoff. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Zerumba.
Madam Mayor, if I may. The reason this funny little circle in the middle of a developed subdivision exists is that when it came through for development, we prohibited development in this circle because there was a significantly tall radio tower there, and we said they couldn't develop within twice the fall height of the tower. Can you confirm that that tower has been removed now?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Would the applicant like to make comment?
And I will tell you that tower was the beacon light of when we were almost home to my kids. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address.
Of course, Riley Planning Services, Penelope Riley. Riley Planning Services, Post Office Box 405, Boise, Idaho 83701.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to begin by stating that the applicant and the project team would like to extend their thanks to Bill and Joshua for all of their assistance. As always, they're very professional and helpful and insightful. The applicant has reviewed the staff report and concurs with the conditions of approval. Sundial Circle preliminary plat completes the Sundial development. As provided in the application packet, a conceptual plan was submitted to the city of Meridian previously with Sundial subdivision number one. The proposed subdivision plat is for 11 residential lots and one common lot. As Josh mentioned, the common lot is to provide a connection to the existing paths to the north and west of our site. This subdivision will be Sundial subdivision number three at final plating. Revised narrative was submitted to include density information. With Sundial Circle, we captured some of the unused density that was part of the previous two phases of Sundial. So even with the capture, we're still at 3.69 units per acre across the entire Sundial subdivision. This is consistent with our R4 zone designation. I have to apologize, in the time I've been sitting here this evening, I have felt this really magnificent sore throat starting, so I'm a little wonky. I apologize. These lots will be consistent with the surrounding residential lots and conform with the development agreement stipulations from 1994. All the lots exceed the 8,000 square foot minimum area. The cul-de-sac complies with ACHD and fire department standards, and the setbacks will match the setbacks in the adjacent subdivision. Photographs submitted with the application show the applicant's intent to use varied roof and wall planes, window placement, and attractive color combinations to create a subdivision that blends with and complements the surrounding residential development. With Sundial Circle, the empty lot will be replaced with residences, and the new owners will contribute to the existing HOA. Now that the cell tower has been removed, the Sundial development can be completed. At our neighborhood meeting, and I missed my notes, I guess, we had a neighborhood meeting on August 17th, and the neighbors that came were very adamant about their interest in this, these 11 lots becoming part of the Sundial Homeowners Association. And the applicant agrees with that. The burden for making that happen lies with the HOA. We can't make it happen. They have to agree as a group to accept the 11 new lots. So I'll let them know again what my understanding of the process is, and I've offered my assistants as a notary to walk around and help them with that if it's necessary. Anyhow, so we're going to join the HOA if we can. The fees right now, according to the members of Sundial, are a little bit on the burdensome side. So the 11 new residences will help soften their burden a little bit. The existing PI system will be extended into the site, and the pump will be upgraded by the applicant to accommodate the additional demand. by the applicant to accommodate the additional demand. The proposed subdivision meets the standards for R four and will fill in an empty lot at the center of a large residential area. Thank you for your time and attention. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor. Just a quick question regarding the CCNRs and the, uh, joining the neighborhood association.
Yes, sir.
If you're unable to come to an agreement with the other neighborhood, is your plan then just to mirror the CCNRs of, of the other HOA?
The, they're set, some of it carries forward from the development agreement nineteen ninety-four. They have eight thousand square foot lots. I think the houses need to be a minimum of fourteen hundred square feet. So yes, I've actually pulled the CCNRs from Sundial and included that in the application packet, so the continuity would be a good idea.
Anything further from council?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one other sign up. James Ellington signed up for. Would you like to provide testimony?
Uh, actually, no.
Okay.
I'm all in favor for it.
It's noted that you are in agreement, you're for this project. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item? James, thank you for sticking around to say you're for this application.
I would like to say one thing.
You'll need to, to come up and now provide testimony.
Apologize.
If you'll please state your name and address.
James Ellington, two six nine eight North Marburg.
Thank you.
I'm actually the HOA president, and I am working with getting out a letter to the other members of the HOA homeowners to try and get these third phase to join us. But I've been busy the past two months dealing with some personal issues, so I'm a little behind. I'm working on it though.
Well, we appreciate that you took the time this evening and you have that point of contact, so thank you so much for joining us.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one who has, no one else who would like to provide testimony? Counsel, any further questions for the applicant or for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Since it doesn't seem like anybody does, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing on PP fifteen dash zero one eight.
Second.
A motion and a second to close public hearing on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All eyes most caring.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat, PP fifteen dash zero one eight, with all staff and applicant comments.
Second.
In public, I guess, sorry.
And then a second to approve item seven D one. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zerumba.
Aye.
All eyes. Item seven E is a public hearing for Bull Ranch, AZ fifteen dash zero one three, PP fifteen dash zero one seven. I will open this public hearing with staff comments, and my apologies to those who have actually stuck around this long that our city council has lasted as long as it has. So, but thank you for sticking with us. So, staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the, an application for annexation and zoning and a, um, for Bull Ranch subdivision. The site is located at sixty-one sixty-eight North Elk Ranch Road, which is south of Chindon and east of North Meridian Road, as you can see in the zoning map and the aerial here. Excuse me, this is an application for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat. So, um, this is the preliminary plat here. This is a, a little history on this. The subject property was platted as part of the Blythe Estates subdivision within Ada County. And the applicant, Gem States ER LLC, has submitted an application for annexation and zoning of ten point zero six acres of land within an, uh, proposed R eight zoning district. A preliminary plat is also proposed consisting of forty-eight single-family residential building lots and nine common lots on, again, ten point zero six acres of land for the proposed Bull Ranch subdivision. There is an existing home and associated outbuildings on the site that will remain and become part, uh, the majority of which will remain and become part of the proposed subdivision, which is Lot twenty-five Block Three. Access to the site today, as I mentioned, is from North Elk Ranch Road, which is, my mouse is there, which is here, um, which actually provides access to the proposed Bull Ranch subdivision and another proposed subdivision that we just received application for. And as part of this, we've, we've asked that they terminate that access and take, take access through the High Tower subdivision and the Seguaro Canyon subdivision to the south, and then High Tower to the east. The, the applicant is proposing that the existing residents be allowed to continue to use the Chindon access until the second phase of development. This is the proposed phasing plan for the development. This being phase one, and this section here with the existing home to remain being part of phase two. Staff believes the applicant should, should amend the phasing plan and include the existing home as part of phase one, so the existing access to Chindon will cease, and the private road easement can be vacated as shown on the submitted preliminary plat in accordance with UDC. At this time, there is an existing six-foot tall privacy fence along the south and east boundary of the, of the proposed development. Based on the area of the preliminary plat, which is ten point zero six acres, a minimum of one point zero one acres or ten percent of open space is required to be provided. The applicant has proposed ten point two percent open space or one point zero two acres in accord with UDC. Because the open space is an integral part of the development, and the irrigation facility must be relocated to accommodate the subdivision design, staff believes the applicant should develop Lot One Block Four with the first phase of development, which is this lot here. Amenities for the development include a picnic area, a community garden, and a micro path connection to the church property to the north, which they are proposing here. There is a singular common drive proposed for access to these lots here as well as to the existing home. And again, here for these homes that eventually will stub through. Commission did recommend approval. We received written testimony from Tamara Thompson, which is, who is the applicant for the land group. In, uh, summary of the commission public hearing, Jason Densmer was in favor. In opposition were Leanna Majors, Paula Workland, Barbara Clark, and Virginia, probably going to butcher the last name, but Corrote. Commenting were Karen De Grazia, John Monteth, Jim Monteth, and Jason Densmer. And again, written testimony was received by Tamara Thompson. Key issues of discussion by the commission were removal of access to Chindon Boulevard by way of an access easement on Elk Ranch Lane, the phasing plan and when to require utility connections to the existing home, the requirement to install fencing on the west boundary of the proposed subdivision, and then the discussion of two-story homes being constructed on the boundary to the High Tower subdivision, which is the subdivision to the east. Key commission changes to the staff recommendation, they removed condition one point one point one A, which is requiring removal of Elk Ranch Lane. They removed condition one point one point two C, which is, uh, to revise the phasing plan to include the existing residents in the first phase. They altered condition one point one point two D to read, require the applicant to vacate the access easement along Elk Ranch Lane prior to signature on the final plat. They added a condition to submit a revised plat showing the redesigned entrance to the subdivision from the south, which they have done, which is shown here. Altered condition one point one point three C to require the fence on the western boundary of the subdivision with phase two of the development. There are no outstanding issues for the city council, and written testimony was received by Michael Hoff. Staff will stand for any, uh, these are the proposed building elevations submitted by the, the applicant. Of the mix of materials, staff will stand for any questions.
So I can't find the, the summary for this one, so I, and you had a lot listed there. Did everyone else get, get that? Okay. What are the densities of the subdivision, the existing subdivision? I think you said high, high gate, high tower?
The, the zonings for the surrounding subdivisions?
Yeah.
R four to the south and R eight to the east.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will note, um, that we received an application that will be coming to Pinzey soon for the property, ten point six acres to the west, and they're requesting, uh, R four zoning there, so.
And as I understand it, those are more like half-acre lots? So, okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions from council at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I wasn't able to locate the, the written testimony from Michael Hoff.
I had that written incorrectly. That was a testimony received by, for Sundial subdivision.
Okay.
So, apologize.
Okay. Would the applicant like to comment?
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name's Tamara Thompson, and I'm with the land group, four six two East Shore Drive in Eagle. I'm representing the property owner tonight for the Bull Ranch subdivision, and to keep things short and sweet, I won't reiterate everything that Josh went through. I do want to list that we are in support of the conditions. We've read the staff report, and, um, the applicant is in support of the conditions other than those that deal with the phasing of the existing home. Where the access points are coming into the site is at the far southeast end of the property, and, if I can draw on this. We have a stub here and here. And the existing home access is clear, I think that isn't even as far west as what it is, so, um, on the, on the far, sorry, northeast, northwest side of the property. So it is completely diagonal across from where the first phase would be. So we're, Planning and Zoning Commission changed the condition, and we are in agreement with, with the changes that they made. The other item deals with the phasing of the utilities, and the sewer, the septic system for the existing house is on the south side. That area there. It's, it's not that great of a burden to connect the sewer, so we're proposing that we connect the sewer with phase one, but that the water, the current well and water for the home is, again, on the far northwest side. And that is much further, so everything on the north side of the house is, is a considerable burden to connect with phase one. So our conditions, again, we're in support of the conditions, and the only condition that we're asking for relief from is one point one point one C, and that we're asking to read that the existing home be connected to the city of Meridian sanitary sewer systems with the first phase of development, and that the existing home be connected to the city of Meridian domestic water systems with the second phase of development. And just to, just to make sure everyone understands is that the existing access for that home to Chindon, that would be the only home that could access that. The, the roadways would not be to that area that any of the other subdivision would be able to get to that area. So there's just that one home that would maintain their existing access until phase two. With that, I will stand for questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
What's going on in the north east corner, and I guess that would be in phase two? Looks like there's two lots.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, that is, that is correct. There is a, um, common driveway there. And three houses would access off of that driveway. And just the, the dark line is phase one, phase one, so everything on the east side. Everything on the east side of that line is phase one. The west side is phase two, with our accesses coming in here and there.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Mr. Zerumba.
When the development just to the east on the east border of this was being discussed, they had issues with flooding, and I don't know if the grading, flooding before they developed, after they developed, I don't know how they solved that, but have you been aware of any, of problem spilling over onto this property?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Zerumba, no, that's, uh, I have not heard of that.
Well, hopefully they solved the problem.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Tamara, would, um, would you consider R four? Because the one to the west is going R four, and your whole south end is all R four. I realize that your east side is an R eight, but, um, I, uh, I would certainly like to see you consider going R four.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, um, if you, Josh, could I get you to put up the, um, future land use map, please? Do you have that right there?
No, but I can get it.
Councilman, um, Bird, I believe the way that, and I think we'll see it when, when we can get that up there, is the density gets higher as you move away from Chindon, and with the R eight to the east of us, and the R eight where we're at, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and then it moves to lower density as you move south. So it is a buffer, if you will, from, um, from Chindon as you, as you move south. The overall density is just under five per acre, and
What's your average lot size?
Yeah, so we need to, the four point seven seven dwelling units per acre is where we're at right now, so the R four would not, would not work with that.
What's your average lot size?
The average lot size is, I believe, um, forty, I'm sorry, fifty-six hundred, right in that area.
Have you provided a transition from the R four to the south by adjusting lot lines that are more compatible to Seguaro Canyon's densities?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, the, the lots on the south property line are, are wider than the ones on the north property line. We did make those wider, and then the lots on the south, I'm sorry, on the east side, we lined up the property line. we lined up the property lines as much as we could with the ones that are to the east there, but they are a little wider on the, on the south end, and they're deeper also.
What, what are your lot sizes on, on that stretch that about Seguaro? I, I can't read that, so.
Madam Mayor, we are, let's see, I think our, well, our average is probably skewed due to the one acre lot that we have for the existing home. On the south end, they range from um, just under fifty-three hundred square feet to right a little above five thousand, five thousand fourteen are some of those.
How are they in compatibility to materials used? Uh, I, now Seguaro's a very nice subdivision and um, you know, I, and that's why I ask, we've carrying on the theme of our first public hearing.
Um, Madam Mayor, the, the materials would be comparable. Um, Josh, if you could put the elevations back up, um, they are they are nice looking homes. They are um, they're, they are more on the, they are going to be smaller homes because of the R eights instead of the R four. But they, they do have the nice, the nice features and the um, gables and different colors and, and materials. And th- and these, these were submitted, these are some of the homes, so those would be um, with the development agreement.
Okay, and any other questions at this point from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did have a couple of people that signed up. Um, Connie Johnston uh, signed up against. Again, I apologize for the late hour, but thank you for sticking with us.
That's okay. Uh, my name is Connie Johnston. I live at five nine eight East Passacona Street, which is in the Seguaro count, uh, Seguaro Canyon neighborhood. I do want to make a couple of points in opposition of this development because it does affect me directly and I there's not as many properties that this affects. The reason there's not as many of us here, so I hope that you'll give my point some, some weight. It says in the Meridian Unified Development Code that your comprehensive plan of the city is to provide a variety of dwelling types and densities. And on this block where we live, we have several building projects going on. In North Meridian, there are many projects, as you know, there's lots of open land and lots of projects going on. We have the Ventana neighborhood, which is zoned R eight. We have the let me find, the Tustin subdivision, which is R four, but there are small lots on R four. We have the Osceenda subdivision, which is R eight. We have the Jericho subdivision, which is R eight in between, and then we have the Westboro townhomes, which are going in just on this city block. And between all of those lots that are being developed, we have over two hundred and fifty easy lots that are now going in. This block goes towards um, the student population goes to Prospect Elementary, and I have five children. My children have all gone there. I have three there right now. And this will impact them. But the, you asked about student population before, in Meridian, we can count based on census data. We can count for one student per household. Um, that's the average, so no matter if it's a townhome or a patio home or whatever, that's the average you can count on, so fifty lots on this little piece of property is going to add another fifty to the already two hundred and fifty, which are already going in just on my block. The schools, Prospect Elementary, Heritage Middle School, and Rocky Mountain are all over enrollment. The Prospect's over fifty over enrollment. Um, Heritage is almost two hundred over enrollment, and Rocky's over three hundred over enrolled. And so this will just add to what has already been approved and is already being billed. This will continue to add. I do want to say also that the property that's right next to it, which is coming um, for approval in a, in a couple of weeks, I know the developer and I just got the postcard in the mail for the hearing, is going in as R two. So that's what's going in next to it, not R four. I also want to say, just as a personal note, that it says in the Meridian Unified Development Code that in approving the development, the council shall find that the arrangement of structures in the development does not cause damage hazard or nuisance to persons or property in the vicinity. The proposed plan that backs up to Seguaro Canyon, because their lot sizes are so small as compared to ours, and especially mine, because I have a corner lot and it kind of goes like this, my back fence line is really long. And so when they build these, I will not just have a side neighbor, side neighbor and a back neighbor. I'm going to have three back neighbors along my back fence, and that makes it really frustrating for us, not only privacy wise, that we won't be able to enjoy our backyard as much, but just dealing with neighbors, and you have all those fence issues and things that you deal with. And that, uh, that's our personal main concern. Our overall concern for the city in general is just overpopulation of this area and the density. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Darrell, Darrell Gallup signed up against. Thank you for sticking with us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Darrell Gallup, five, five, four, East Passacona Street.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to just reiterate what Mrs. Johnston has said. Uh, we believe that the uh, density of, of homes in this uh, plan uh, are too great, uh, especially because of congestion that's going to be caused by the number of cars that have to exit out of the uh, southwest, or southeast corner of the uh, of the development. And most of those cars are going to want to try to get onto Chindon Boulevard, uh, which means then they have to go to Seguaro Hills Road, which has no stoplight, no s- uh, or stop sign. And so when we are trying to turn either left or right onto Chindon, it's almost impossible, and so most people drive through the neighborhood and access Chindon uh, through a different uh, route. And so I just, uh, I'm concerned about the, the high density uh, that Councilman Bird expressed and that you intimated. We believe that R four would be much more amenable to the, the, the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Lake left a, a letter. Um, Madam Clerk, can you read that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Grabbed the wrong piece of paper. Uh, it says, "To whom it may concern, we had a prior commitment and are not able to attend the meeting tonight. Please know that we are very much against you zoning the property behind our own, behind our home R eight and building humble homes in these lots. Thank you. Glenn and Susan Lake, five, seven, six, East Pass, Passacona Street."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor, City Council, uh, I'm Bill Fremgen, fifty-two, sixty-two, North Papago Place, Boise, Idaho, and I'm the developer that uh, she was just speaking for, so I wanted to speak on behalf of this development. Uh, I think this development is key for that area in that when you're looking at Hightower, they have alley load and very high density, and there's even some townhomes to the east of them. We're going to be um, more medium density, and then we're going to basically estate homes, you know, six hundred thousand dollar homes to our east, which is going to connect through to Meridian Road, so I think that's going to help mitigate a lot of the traffic concerns that people were, were speaking to earlier. But uh, I think we need to make sure that we have a, a variety of housing in this neighborhood, so the fine public servants that work in this very building can afford to live in this town and not have to move out of it, because if we went to R four, you know, you'd be talking three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar homes, we're going to be in the mid two hundred thousand dollar range, so I think it's very important to keep that type of variety of developments in there, so people, average working people can afford to buy homes and not just uh, the uh, the Polo crowd. Um, do you have any other questions about the development, as I've been spearheading it?
Council, any questions? No, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate your time.
Okay, any further testimony? Would the applicant like um, to make any final comments? Okay. Council, any further questions for applicants or staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
For clarity, and while we're in public, so Tamara can correct me if I'm wrong, there, we're proposing ten point six acres, which one acre is being taken out by the existing home? Am I not right? And um, we're, we've got one point one point oh one for green space being taken out, so that's, that's two acres. That gets us down to eight acres. And we're going to put on forty-eight single family homes. And by the time you take out all your roadways and stuff like that, uh, you're going to be, you're pretty dense. You're pretty dense.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, the, the densities, the gross density as defined by the Uniform Development Code is four point seven seven dwelling units per acre, and the net density is seven point two four dwelling units per acre, and that's, you know, there's, there's two different definitions when you just how you did that math, how you take all of the, the roads and that kind of thing out of the, out of the equation.
But you, uh, and what is your, what is the minimum uh, square footage of the houses? Do you have any? Fourteen hundred.
I'm sorry, yeah, Councilman.
And your, of course, your setbacks are uh, on, in R eight is what, four? Property line four, five? What's the setbacks on R eight?
Not sure, understand, so the, the side yard setbacks, the rear setbacks, sorry?
The side setbacks.
Five feet.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Council, any further, anything further on this? Mr. Borton.
If not, I would move that we close the public hearing on item seven E, AZ fifteen oh one three, and PP fifteen oh one seven.
Second.
A motion, a second to close the public hearing on item seven E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item seven E, AZ fifteen oh one three, uh, to include uh, staff and applicant comments, and in particular with regard to condition one point one, point one C, that the applicant the existing home connect to the city sewer service with phase one, be permitted to connect to domestic water service within phase two.
Okay, I have a motion. Um, do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll second, but I want a clarification now.
Mr. Bird.
What'd you say on the condition C, to have it pu- uh, at, to do it during se- uh, phase one?
Sewer on phase one and water in phase two.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard.
Well, just for discussion purposes, I, I do think that the density is too much. Um, we have uh, a lot of R eight in that area. I do believe that we need a, a choices of, of housing, and we have it in that area. It is a, a budding of, a nice subdivision that this is going to drive right through it. I, I just don't think it's the right development at the right time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
This is one of those that you often quote me on, and I think it's applicable. I don't think we're in that big of hurry to annex uh, what can be a, an issue, and I say that for a couple of reasons. One, we have a s- special request for a property to be on the sewer but not the water. I'd charge them for that since the sewer rate is based on water consumption. I, I know it can be worked out, but it's, it's a, another hassle. The word lane came up. That always gives me great amounts of grief. And I will tell you, it will bring great amounts of grief to you all if you allow access via a lane to any property in the City of Meridian. So I, my position is, is not to support the, the motion and, and would not support this application.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Well, I second it. I agree with Councilman Roundtree. There's too many negatives on this to me and that, in that area, and I think you hit it on the head on the density and and you, I just think that this isn't the product we want right now, so I, I will be voting no.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Bird?
No.
Councilmember Roundtree?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zaromba?
No.
Um, the motion fail, or? Yeah, the motion fails. So, I, I do need um, another motion.
Madam Mayor. I move that we deny the request for annexation and zoning for item seven one and preliminary plat seven E two.
Second.
And in a second, to deny approval of item seven E, one and two, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
No.
Councilmember Zaromba?
Aye.
Um, motion passes. Item seven F is a public hearing on um, through our Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. Just seeing if you're still awake over there.
Barely. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I stand here, excuse me, tonight before you seeking approval of our Parks and Rec fee for winter, spring, two thousand sixteen, highlighted by a uh, additional senior trip. We will be taking a McCall Winter Carnival day trip. Going to offer that to the seniors in our community, zip up to McCall for a day, take, taking the uh, ice sculptures and hop on a bus and hurry back, so. Um, with that being said, I will stand for any questions.
Do you have to be a senior?
Yes.
In your, what?
Not there yet.
A senior in high school?
Fifty-five and old, active seniors. We're calling them active seniors.
Getting there, but you got a few years. Come faster.
Yeah. Uh, any, any further questions for Jake? Thank you.
Thank you.
Isn't November over?
It is.
That's supposed to go off somewhere?
Yeah.
Sometime? Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Seeing none?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we close the public. I move we close the public hearing on the, uh, proposed winter fee schedule for the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to close public hearing on item seven F, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes, motion carried. Item seven G is, uh, resolution number fifteen dash one one zero three.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve fifteen, resolution number fifteen dash one one oh three. This is the resolution adopting the winter of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fee schedule for the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, authorizing the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item seven G. And have we provided an effective date?
Yeah, that was automatic.
Okay, it's automatic.
When we pass it.
Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba?
Aye.
It's getting late. Item seven H is a public hearing, um, on proposed updates to the Meridian Police Department fee schedule.
Madam, Madam Mayor, this is the-
It's, trust me, I am the police department.
Jeff come before us last meeting on this, you weren't, weren't here.
Oh, okay.
He brought this and presented it, and we told him to bring it back with the resolution, am, am I not right?
You're correct, Madam Members of the Council, on the public, on the public, uh, notice, there's a few fees that have changed, mostly in relation to public records. They're all related to personnel costs. We haven't updated them for a couple of years because the incremental amounts are so small, but now they've jumped significantly and the laws changed. So these were just changes in regards to fees collected for public records or when officers are hired for particular events that we require they be hired for, so that's all it is.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Is there, um, any further discussion on this? If not, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, actually, a comment, sorry, I know we were reaching together here.
Okay.
Um, and question and a comment, uh, comment first, I'd like to have this, sorry, Dean, I'm sorry. Um, comment, I'd like to see this brought back on an annual basis as opposed to, as my dad calls it, kind of a willy-nilly time of year, um, I think annual is, is more prudent. Um, and then the question is, uh, previous, we provided a, a credit if it went over and above the allotment from s- the state, is that still in here or has that been removed?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Cavanagh, the, the waiver, the ten dollars is still there, so that still exists. If you recall, what Chief Levy said is, we'll get some data and then come back and have that conversation, so. So we have what the state requires that we give without charge. We have the additional ten dollars that you have authorized to us to go over, so this is only once it exceeds both of those.
Great, thank you.
And, and just for Mr. Cavanagh's, um, information, uh, the departments do review the fees annually. If it's a minute, um, change, they don't bring a fee update to council.
A, a comment then, when you look at the fee change from where it was and where it is today, it's, it's significant. And so rather than do this and it have to be a significant burden, I think that it needs to be reviewed annually and give council the opportunity to decide if we want to approve that or hold off.
And, and that's very fair, but I, I think that Mr. Neri did explain one of the, the cause for the big fee increase and that's a piece of legislation. And so I, I just want you to know that the departments do look at those and, and we will take your words back again.
Appreciate it.
Cause I've had those words.
I, they are good words to have.
Madam Mayor, move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close public hearing on item seven H, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Mayor.
All ayes, yes, Ms. Mylum?
I move that we approve resolution, uh, number fifteen dash one one zero four, adopting the Meridian Police Department fee schedule.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item seven, aye, if there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba?
Aye.
Ayes, motion carried. Item eight A is ordinance fifteen dash one six five five, Madam Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City of Meridian, ordinance number fifteen dash one six six five, an ordinance repealing and replacing Title One, Chapter Fifteen, Sections one through three of the Meridian City Code regarding administration, discrimination prohibited, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
I don't see anyone who would like to hear this read in its entirety, so.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number fifteen dash sixteen sixty-five with suspension of rules.
Second.
Second to approve item eight A, Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried, enthusiastic ayes even, uh, counsel, anything under item nine? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes.
This is getting back from the nineteen hundreds.
What time does it start? Let me see.
We could do it, well, you gotta, you gotta get down there.
Can you do it eight o'clock?
In the, in the morning?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah, it shouldn't take us more than.
Hey, Bill, can we do the agenda setting, uh, Friday at eight here?
Yes.
Okay. Casey, you good with that? Okay.